You're in, looking nice.
Okay.
Beautiful. You look like me.
Well, let me do that right. Going to call to order today's regular meeting of the Jackson City Council. It is ten oh five. We want to go ahead and get started because we have a long agenda set before us today. As we get ready to start, we're going to have invocation by our very own evangelist Sabrina Shelby. If you would, please stand. After that, I will ask if we would do the pledge of allegiance and to be led by Councilman Foot.
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for another day's journey. We thank you for your generous grace, your marvelous mercies, and your limitless love. Father, we thank you because you are a faithful God. And so, right now, we ask that you forgive us because we have not been as faithful. Father, you said, "We're two or three are gathered together in your name," that you will be in the midst of us. So, Father, let your presence be felt and your power be known. Father, let everything that's said, discussed, debated, or disagreed upon be conducted from a place of respect for one another and reverence for you. Father, right now, we ask that you bless our mayor and his administration. We ask that you bless our councilmen and women and their staff. Make us one. Unite us, for you know, a city that's divided shall not stand. Father, you are the Potter.
Yes.
And we are but clay. We are servants of the city of Jackson, Mississippi. Father, so, right now, we ask that everything that's done and said would glorify your name.
Yes, God.
Father, look beyond our faults and see our needs. Father, remind us often that each and every one of us will have to stand before you and give an account of how we handle your business. Father, we have a very, very, very long agenda today. Give us the patience to endure, and we will be so careful to give you all the praise, all the honor, and all the glory. It is in your darling son, Jesus' name that I do pray. Amen.
Amen. All right.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to take the opportunity to thank Sabrina Shelby for that wonderful, glorious prayer, and just want to say that good things do come out of subdivision number two and that good things do come out of Forest Hill High School. All right? And so, at this time, I will open the floor for any acknowledgements or special openings. I'll start to my right, Councilwoman Lee.
I'd like to open the meeting in memory of one of our veteran firefighters that was killed over the weekend, Mr. Gerald Buster Bates. I'd like to keep the department and his family in our prayers.
Duly noted. Councilwoman Lindsey.
Yes, I join my colleague in opening this memory in honor and memory and honor of firefighter Gerald Bates. He was a resident of Ward Seven, and he also was assigned to Station Five, which is in Bellhaven. And I had several constituents tell me that he was always so kind and so professional, and he will be greatly missed in our ward and by the people of Ward Seven.
Any other special openings or acknowledgements? Yes, Dr. Omar.
I'd like to say that the administration concurs and would like to open in honor and memory of our firefighter Gerald Bates.
Duly noted. Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to open and close the meeting in honor of a long-term employee who's going to be missing the next meeting we have, regular meeting, Mr. Robert Lee, for all his hard work over the past twenty years.
Councilman Griselle.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to open and close this meeting in a celebratory spirit. Valerie Brown, my deputy clerk, celebrated her sixty-ninth birthday the other day. Santa Valerie. Y'all joined me in wishing her a happy birthday. She looks good for sixty-nine, doesn't she?
I thought you said birthday wishing was like...
It was just a wish, it was not a gift.
All right. Oh, okay, okay. Well, that's good. Happy birthday, Valerie, and let it be known that all these recognitions will be stated on the record. All right, any other openings? All right, let's start with Consent Agenda.
All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately.
Second.
All right, it's been moving properly, second on this item. Colleagues, I need, we need to make an amendment to Consent Agenda to add the minutes for March twenty-first. All right, it's been moving properly, second to amend Consent Agenda to add the minutes from March twenty-first. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor? All right, the amendment passes six to zero. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum of six. Any other questions on Consent Agenda? All in favor of Consent Agenda? Item carries six-zero. All right, colleagues, we'll go to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance prohibiting blocked railroads crossing in the city of Jackson, Mississippi.
Councilman Griselle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, so, this ordinance has been coming about for quite a while. I remember when I was a freshman at Jackson State University, I would sometimes be late traveling to class because the trains would just sit and sit right outside of Pete Brown Golf Course. And of course, we had a big issue when the Vadock was closed along North Side Drive and Livingston Road, basically blocking off two communities. A lot of traffic relies on getting from one side of town to the other. People are now being forced to speed through school zones. I've had conversations with Senator Wicker, Congressman Bennet Thompson, Cindy Hayes Smith's staff about this. I've even written certified letters to her Attorney General asking her to join the national lawsuit against other, with other states against these blocked crossings. And so, this is a very serious issue, and I ask for your consideration and support moving forward. Thank you.
Any questions or comments on the introduction of this ordinance? All right, Legal, are you able to work with this and give the information needed before adoption? This is on the introduction ordinance fifteen? All right, so, we'll just roll this over for adoption at the next council meet. All right, introduction ordinance, item sixteen?
Ordinance of the city of Jackson, Mississippi, creating regulations for the installation of digital security camera systems for parking lots and entry-exit door monitoring of convenience-type grocery stores and service stations and providing procedures for the incorporation of said security camera systems into the city existing blue light camera network. Said ordinance to be titled, "Connect Jackson Blue Light Safety Initiative."
All right, Councilwoman Lee, Vice President Lee.
Well, thank you. This is something that we've been working on for about a year now. We started with Chief Wade, and we've worked very closely with the Jackson Police Department and our city legal department. We researched Flint, Michigan, Decatur, Georgia, and even a local ordinance in Gluckstadt, where they are requiring blue light cameras at their gas stations to deter crime. I think this is something that will be beneficial to Jackson Police Department and also to the citizens as we stop to look for a safe place to get gas and also for the convenience stores and gas stations to make their properties more safe. This will tie into the real-time command center and have twenty-four-hour surveillance, and it's requesting that convenience stores and gas stations get into our blue light camera network system.
Thank you. We had some good discussion about this yesterday as well with some recommendations that I know will come from Legal. And I did have an opportunity to talk with Vice President Lee about that last night after our work session. Are there any other questions or comments on this? Legal, we will be able to have all this ready so we can roll it over for adoption. All right, so, item sixteen, we'll roll it over for adoption at the next meeting.
Thank you, colleagues.
All right, adoption of ordinance, item seventeen?
Ordinance amending the city of Jackson Classification and Compensation Plan to add job classifications of deputy chief financial officer at a pay range fifty, liaison officer at a pay range thirty-four, procurement operations manager at a pay range thirty-four, fixed asset manager at a pay range thirty-one, vendor equity coordinator at a pay range twenty-eight, and fiscal operation manager at a pay range thirty-four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving properly, second on this item. Questions and or comments? Yes, Councilwoman Lee, I mean, Vice President Lee.
Mr. President, I just want to say that I have some hesitation about passing this. I just don't feel comfortable hiring all of these new positions and not letting positions go that were deemed, some people were deemed incompetent, and we're going to keep them, and I just, I'm just unready. I have a lot of hesitation about this.
Thank you. Councilman Foot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I share in Ms. Lee's concerns about this, mainly from the budget standpoint. The, my calculations based on the chart that's been handed out, the colored chart and the new positions there, and just using the base rate salaries that are put in, that are enlisted in the agenda, my calculations come up to the annual budget being around six hundred thousand dollars for these new positions. And I'm not sure if that includes all the expenses, but the, that's a lot of expense to add, and I'm not convinced that the value add to the city outweighs the expense of another six hundred thousand dollars that will be an annual expense for the city.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, yes, go ahead. Vice President Lee.
I think the plan is good. I mean, in theory, it's just, I think we have deeper things that we need to discuss before we would move forward with this.
Mr. Malinbecker, as you addressed this, last time you were up on the record, you said that there were some staff members that were incompetent. And in saying that and retaining them along with raises and everything, you know, kind of drew some unreadiness. If you could clear that up and talk through this?
Yeah, sure. Good morning, Fidelis Malinbecker. And I want to correct, I think, if I did say incompetent, I don't recall using that word in particular. It is a matter of understanding the work, the work process, right? And so, they would not necessarily be deemed incompetent. Last time I was asked, would we terminate these folks? And I said, "Those that do not have the requisite skills will be repositioned," right? And so, you know, we don't want to paint the picture that we're calling folks incompetent. But to address the budget question, right? So, when we started talking about this work, this body asked, you know, what would it take to fix our problems? We shared with you, after some deliberations internally, how we envisioned resolving the issues we had. I was asked, you know, what would the cost be, right? And at that time, we were sharing estimates, anywhere from five hundred to six hundred thousand. Then, of course, a question came up, did we have a plan to fund it? And I said, "We were thinking through how this could be funded without necessarily requiring or requesting for the full amount to be appropriated," right, "from fund balance in particular." And how we were going to do that is look at all the positions citywide that deal with finance management and identifying what needed to be consolidated, what needed to be restructured, and where we could derive some savings from that work and apply those savings to the cost for the centralization, right? So, that's what we shared. Two weeks ago, when we brought an order before this body, that was to move some funds internally within Department of Administration and Finance to fund some of the critical positions that will be leading this work, because it's a process, right? This does not happen right away. We shared that this will be a phased-in approach. And so, there are particular positions that we have to fund so that folks can begin the management work that's required, right? So, we did that. It's a little over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was moved internally, right? And this is not money that we were asking for you to find. It was authorization for us to move those funds. Then, as early as yesterday, I was asked, you know, how much are we looking at? And I said, "Between two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand, potentially that we could make a request for, or through the same work, the same assessment that we're doing, potentially, we could find some savings." I know Councilman Hartley asked me a question about office coordinators, right? This is where we've been doing the assessment to see how divisions and departments should be structured. If they're setting vacant positions for office coordinators, some of those could actually be frozen to move money, right, to fund the centralization process. So, that is all part of it. After doing all that work, if there is a need to request for additional appropriations, then that request would be made. And so, the question about the budget, right, it's not, as I mentioned, just asking you to give us five hundred, six hundred thousand. This is the same work we've been doing across departments, either identifying funding for raises. We have gone in to review the staffing structures. Certain positions were frozen so we could enable departments to receive raises. So, this is similar work that we've been carrying out.
Councilwoman Lee, follow up.
Mr. Malinbecker, have we looked at hiring a full-time accountant?
An accountant? Are you talking about a outsourced accounting service?
Or even just looking to hire one internally?
We do have accountants. Now, I don't know if your definition would be the CPA is what you're referring to, because we do have accountants that actually do accounting work. Our controller is an accountant, right? Previously, we have, we have brought in outsourced accounting services to provide support. But what we must understand, you know, government accounting, accounting is different. So, at times, even when you bring in firms, right, you have to educate them on the accounting standards for government, because some will come from what they call FASB, Financial Accounting Standards Board. And so, I know last time, they spent a lot of work trying to train those accountants that were supporting some of the work. So, you know, is it possible? I mean, we could explore additional options.
A lot of this is putting invoices in and getting them paid that...
Yeah, so, and you don't need a CPA for that, right? That's a lot of clerical work. And where we found issues within departments and divisions, because we've been decentralized, you do have folks who work as office coordinators who serve in different capacities that receive invoices, you know, have to enter them through the system. But that system has been fragmented, right? I mean, that's why we find ourselves in the situation we're in. I mean, later on today on the agenda, there's an item, right, that addresses some outstanding bills. And all this has been generated because of our structure. And to fix it, we have to centralize.
Councilwoman Lindsey.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Banks, if there is still unreadiness on this item, I would like to ask that we consider putting it back in committee because I think this is important work. This was done by our Harvard Fellow with grant funding. And the item that Mr. Malinbecker is referencing is item number forty-seven, which goes through a lengthy list of bills that have not been paid because they just were essentially stuck in the system. And included in that is interest payments, which, and what I'm seeing right now is over ten thousand dollars. And this much, I do know, we all have gotten phone calls. We've all gotten complaints from people who have not been paid. We have not been able to pay our invoices in a timely manner because the system we have does not work. And I, for one, do not support status quo on that. I think we have got to look at a meaningful way to change the system in how we are paying our bills. We all know, we all know that this has been a huge fault and failing in how we operate. Now, I am not dying in a ditch over how many people or how much this ends up being. I've been the one who, I've been talking for seven years about the fact that we need a certified public accountant. That is not an accountant, that is a certified public accountant. And there, as you know, there are certified public accountants who specialize in government. And so, Mr. Banks, I think there are probably still a lot of questions, and we may need to look at this a little more closely. But I do not think status quo is where we need to land on this.
Duly noted. Councilman Foot, and then Mayor. Councilman Foot.
Couple of thoughts just on the line of the invoices. And that has been essential, one of the thing drivers of this particular issue. As to item forty-seven, we were told yesterday specifically that the reason those invoices weren't paid was because we didn't have money in that department to pay them. So, that was not a case of them just being lost or whatever. But the, I think, the way I look at this from a business perspective is that paying invoices is a process, okay? A process we spend, that's necessary to succeed, whether you're a business or whether you're a city, for that matter. And we haven't done a very good job at it. The, we spent millions of dollars on software, which is mainly an attempt to automate a lot of the clerical functions and other functions that the city has to have happen. And so, it's clear to me, or I think, it's my opinion, that we are not taking advantage of the millions of dollars we've spent on software that are intended to make us more efficient and take care of things like invoices in the process. So, we need to work harder on making the software function to make us a more efficient city. And so, the, one of the, the, I think it's important to separate funk processes, which where we're focused on invoices is the process to make sure that you pay your bills and that you collect your bills when they come in and don't, they don't get lost. And that's something, it doesn't require eleven new employees at the finance department. So, it's not a, it's heavy on process and making the process function work, and it doesn't require a lot of manpower. Where we need manpower, I think, is in and down at the cutting edge of the city, right where we interface with the constituents, where we're fixing potholes and other things like that, that is a good investment in manpower and all. So, I just wanted to make that difference. I do think it, I agree with Ms. Lindsey that this ought to probably go back in the committee and so we can sort through this stuff. I don't think we need to make a commitment to hire all these people on the front end when we don't know exactly where the savings might come, you know, down the road. And I'd like to know more, have more specifics on here are the jobs that are going to be consolidated or whatever. Thank you.
All right, let me do this, and I do acknowledge the mayor, but I want the mayor to be able to respond to kind of everybody instead of just, you know, going back and forth. So, Councilwoman Lindsey.
Yeah, that's, I actually, I do agree with you, Mr. Foot, that I don't think we're at a place yet to vote on this. But I don't think, you just said it, the current system is not working. It is absolutely broken. And I'm not dying in a ditch either over how many people this is. I think it needs more study. But I also do not want us to continue to prop up a system that is not serving us well, and we end up with interest penalties and back due payments for, that really talk about money that could be used in other ways. I mean, that has to stop.
Mayor.
Yeah, let me begin by saying that I categorically reject any notion that suggests that the people working in finance and the various divisions are incompetent. So, any suggestion of that or any alluding to that in any way, not only do I reject, but I will defend the people that work hard for the city of Jackson. So, let me say that. It is a process. But let's start with the fact that, you know, as we see that there are gaps and challenges in this process, part of that is acknowledgement that you don't know the process, right? And so, if we've brought in help from outside in order to evaluate, this is what they do, in order to give recommendations and suggestions, in order to improve the process, right? Then, we can't look a gift horse in the mouth and say, "Well, we reject your, you know, suggestions and, you know, what you've provided to us and what you've supported us with," right? And so, yes, technology has changed, but this isn't AI technology that replaces people, and there's no decision or human hands that have to be applied to it. It is supposed to make it more efficient. However, there is also a learning curve to this technology. There is new fields that have to be put in. There is, because the system has more checks and balances, it kicks things out, things that didn't used to be kicked out. And the people within the departments aren't used to that, right? And so, there has been a learning curve to this. Now, what will happen if we get to a place where the technology is better understood or the software is better understood and that we're fully staffed, because what you hadn't accounted for in the finance department and all of those departments is they've lost people like everybody else. And they've just tried to maintain the work even though they're already short-staffed. So, you're criticizing people who are short-staffed trying to maintain the job that ten more people, since we're talking about ten, at one point in time, used to be there to help. So, let's start with the fact that we already don't have enough people per where we used to be, not to mention that there is a fully invested team on this, studying this matter and figuring out where the gaps are and what we need to support. So, I just suggest that we take the advice of those who have come here to help us that we've asked for collectively, that we've collectively said that we need this support in order to move forward. Thank you. And if there's unreadiness today, I'm fine with that. This can be the conversation, you know, and I appreciate the words. I appreciate everybody's words, but I think that Councilwoman Lindsey was on point, that we can't just accept it as it is and say, you know, and continue to complain about it. That means that we're just admiring the problem. That means that the only thing we have to offer a problem is a complaint, and we're trying to solve it.
Mr. Malinbecker.
Yeah, so, one thing I do appreciate, as the mayor mentioned, is sometimes not knowing, you know, the process. And there are a lot of questions that have been fielded, and I know they come from a position where you might not know, you know, what that process entails. What I will offer is to bring those members that would like a deeper understanding on this whole process to our conference room and so we can walk you through, right? So, you can see exactly where the bottlenecks exist and how we envision clearing that up. So, that's one thing I'll offer is just to have that opportunity to walk you through. And Councilman Foot, to talk about the technology piece and training, right? A lot of, a lot of times, that's where issues are. But what our plan entails is to assign people that will be doing the training for employees as well as vendors, right? Who, as we go virtually with the vendor sales service, we'll have to train folks. And so, what we've envisioned in our plan is to assign a training component and also standing up citywide what would be equivalent to a training division to have folks that will conduct trainings across the city. We have to empower and develop our people, and so we do recognize that in the plan. But I offer that opportunity.
All right. Look, at the end of the day, I think that this council wants to see, you know, dysfunction and happen, right? I'm not going to say that the unreadiness is just because there's not belief that it can be done with the staff here. I think my colleagues listen carefully to what you say and have seen things that have happened, you know, for a period of time. And so, there's several questions that, you know, as President, I have an opportunity to talk to all colleagues and hear concerns. And so, the questions that I'm going to just lay out that I think needs to be answered and cleared up to get rid of that unreadiness. One, when this problem start happening, what were the things that went wrong? And why has this not happened in the history of Jackson before? Two, is since it has been made known by several colleagues that they want a CPA accountant to be on the staff, did that fall on deaf ears? And is there a way to maybe merge some of the new positions or streamline them to hire an accountant R. two? You know, three would be, what is going to be your measurable? What are you going to use to be able to measure the outcomes of how this works? And colleagues, if there's anything else to add? You know, I was ready to vote on this today, but there's unreadiness. I do not want this to fail. All right. Mr. Malinbecker.
Yeah, so I do have a question once again, right? As we, we talk about CPA, the question to the body is, would you support a funding request, right? Because, one, we must acknowledge, you know, hiring a CPA, as you know, you know, can be, you know, fairly costly. And so, as I get these requests and we bring this forth, I want you to remember, right, the requests that you're making. And when we bring it back, right, if you can support that, we'll make it.
I think that's made known. I don't think the council is ignorant to the, to the standpoint of making a request for something and not understanding total. We've had this conversation for several years, even before you came. And if this is proposing eleven new positions, then I'm sure three or four positions can be merged to make that up, and everything else can still follow the same plan. All I'm saying is go back and look at it to make it work according to the concerns that you hear across this body. Are there any additional concerns or questions, or did I pretty much hit it? Council? You good? Councilman Hart.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, I had asked some, some similar questions, and I got, well, we've had about five different reports on this issue. But still, there is a, there is a misunderstanding of a lot of processes. Regardless of how many times this has been presented, it has not happened. And I think the people deserve to know that we clearly understand, regardless of how many times the process has been brought to us, that we clearly understand what's going on with their finances and the application of taxpayers' money. Also, the vendors clearly understand. And that's why yesterday I was willing to ask that, hey, look, man, just break it down to us. And I think, I think that there may be some, part of the issue is that misunderstanding. And hopefully, we can all work together in identifying a solution. Because if it's just for you and the experts to understand and we don't get it, then how can we possibly support it? So I, I thank you for everything you're doing, Mr. Malinbecker. I believe we're moving in the right direction, but I believe more understanding to this council is needed. And I look forward to that, to more information being provided in the committee.
Sure. And prior to that, Councilman Hartley, I do offer you to visit with us, right? So we can spend some time going through that.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Councilman Hartley, I appreciate that statement of what you said, and we will take on the chin if we need to spend more time explaining these things so that you're more comfortable. So I just want to say that I appreciate that statement, and we'll take the time out. If there is a lack of, if there is, if there's a gap that we're not communicating correctly, then we'll spend the time to fill that gap.
And I think it's important to know that we run into the contractors. They, they, you know, they come after us, and they want to understand what is wrong. And so, you know, being one of our biggest duties here is the finances, I think all of us need to be a part of working through this thing, seeing it, and being supportive of it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Colleagues, would, is there going to do, let me ask you how you want to do this? Do you, do you want to make a formal motion to remand this to committee? Or do you want to withdraw your motions and let me just put it in committee? How you want to do it?
I withdraw my second.
All right. The motion is second, has been withdrawn. I will put this item in Finance Committee, and we'll poll to call one as soon as possible so that we can start having that conversation. Mr. Malinbecker, if you can work on those things and requests. Thank you. All right. Before we go to claims, we have an emergency item. And that emergency item is an order amending the fiscal year 2023-24 budget for the Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division. And this emergency item is to take care of fees. We cannot have any discussion on this until we get this added to the agenda. Is there a motion from this body to add this to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded on this item. On this right, oh, I got you, I'll say, okay. Order amended the fiscal year 2023-24 budget of Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division. All in favor? All right. Item carries unanimously. This item is now on the agenda. Clerk.
Order amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget of the Department of Public Works Solid Waste Division.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded on this item. Somebody want to just explain this for the record, for the sake of the public? Mayor or attorney? For the sake of the public.
Oh, okay. You can go ahead.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. Essentially, this is a transfer to make available the funds to pay the first portion of the MDQ fine.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Councilman Foot.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, we've got, I've got the item here in front of me, and I do not know the different accounts. Zero zero one dash five eight nine nine, and then it goes to another account. And from zero zero nine dash five nine one one, can you give me the names of those accounts?
I can tell you that it's coming out of fund balance. I can tell you that.
Anyway, I'd like to know the notification, the names of each one of these accounts the money's coming and going to.
Yeah, Fidelis Malinbecker, CFO. Don't have that in front of me, but the funds are coming from fund balance going to Fund Nine, which is sanitation, solid waste division. Okay, sure. Right, so the zero zero one dash five eight nine is your fund balance, right, transferring to zero zero one four nine three zero zero six seven five three. And then...
What, what, no, what fund is that?
Yeah, go ahead.
I can read the number. I just don't know what the number is, what it is.
Sharon Tims, we are taking, fifty-eight ninety-nine is applied fund balance. That's what you have to use to bring it out of fund balance.
Okay.
We're appropriating to another fund, so it has to be an appropriation. That's why you see the four moves. So we have to use fifty-eight ninety-nine to bring it out of fund balance to apply fund balance. The sixty-seven fifty-three in Fund One is a transfer out to Fund Nine. The fifty-nine eleven is a transfer in. And then the sixty-seven twelve is where we'll pay the agency.
The account it's going into is solid waste?
Correct.
Okay, so the fine we're paying DEQ is being paid out of the solid waste?
Correct.
So all of these are monies going through the system to get to, from, from fund balance to get to solid waste, and we'll pay the fine out of solid waste. And that, and that's going to be paid to Waste Management, not Waste Management, to MDQ today?
Yes, we will cut the wire today as soon as the claims.
All right. Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor? All right. Item carries unanimously. All right. Is there anything else that needs to be considered before we bring claims up? Anything else? All right. Claims?
Order approving claims appearing at pages three one zero to inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of four million four hundred eighty-seven thousand thirty-six dollars and twenty cents for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded on claims. Are there any questions or comments? Comment? We need to make amendment? Okay. Clerk, if you would, state the amendment. Do you have it? Who has it? Say that one more time. Yes, please.
Sir, we do have a couple amendments. I, I missed what was discussed. We had a sidebar.
Okay.
You need me to go over the amendments?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Yes, please. And if we can group them all in one. She's bringing the invoice to me now so that I can see and let the body see.
Yeah. So the first one is a payment to Storage Max downtown. And this is for the Human and Cultural Services order that was passed in the last meeting. And this is a payment of eight hundred twenty-two dollars. The second amendment is to add a payment to Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for three hundred and seventy-five thousand that was just approved in the last order. And those should be the two amendments.
All right. Any, any question or comments on the amendment? All right. I need a motion on the amendment as read.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to amend claims as read by the CFO. Are there any questions or comments? Here none other, all in favor of the amendment? All right. So we have six and one abstention. Let the record reflect that we do have a full quorum of seven at this point. We do have a quorum of seven. All right. Now we have claims on the floor as amended. Did you go over the large items?
So the four largest claims on this docket are as follows. The first is Bancorp South in the amount of five hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred six dollars and twenty-six cents paid out of Fund Three Sixteen, Twenty Fifteen, AB GO Refunding. And this is for the General Obligation Bond Series, Twenty Fifteen A, May 2024. Second is public employees retirement in the amount of five hundred ten thousand two hundred three dollars and sixty-seven cents paid out of Fund Fifty-Five Disability and Relief Fund. This is transfer of taxes of March 2024. The third is Jackson Convention Complex in the amount of four hundred eighty thousand paid out of Fund Three Ninety-One, APA. This is for additional funding for, for the Jackson Convention Complex. And the fourth is Dickerson and Bowen Incorporated in the amount of four hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-two cents paid out of Fund One Seventy-Three, One Percent Infrastructure Tax. This is for the Street Resurfacing Project Phase One. And that's the report for the four largest claims.
All right. Councilman Foot.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malinbecker, for the overview there. I got one question, you know, PERS has been in the news a lot lately because of a bill over at the State Legislature. This five hundred ten thousand two oh three, is that a quarterly payment? Or do you know, can you tell us what the number we're going to pay this year, this fiscal year for PERS is?
Yeah, so Councilman Foot, this retirement is for police and fire.
Okay.
So this is the Disability and Relief Fund.
Okay.
Right. What you're referring to is the PERS.
Yeah, the matching.
For the other employees. So with the additional two percent increase and the two percent above the seven point four, seventeen point four that we pay, that is, for the full fiscal year, will be equivalent to about one point two million dollars. If it does go into effect July, we will be looking at an additional three hundred thousand that we'll have to pay out to close out the fiscal year.
Okay. So this money's in addition to that, those other employer matching funds?
Yes. So, so, right, with PERS, the matching funds come directly from the city. With a disability and relief, there is an imposed tax mileage, right? So this is essentially the tax mileage is coming in for disability and relief that gets transferred.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any, any other questions?
Thank you. Doc, it's rumored that Jackson State is in the process of taking over downtown Hotel Marriott. How would that affect us monetarily? Can you check and see how much currently we getting on real estate taxes? And once Jackson State, if they take it over, that's money that's not going to come to the city?
Yes, Councilman Starks, we'll, we'll follow up on that in terms of the real property tax that is paid for that building. So we'll get that information for you.
And can you check and see where's the ownership at as of today?
Sure.
And make sure that no one's behind on those taxes?
We'll do that. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Malinbecker, have you ever gotten to the, this body, the running tab of APA funds left and then the running tab of fund balance?
Yeah, so one is with APA funds. I know last time we did share, there's approximately two million dollars that's left. This is not including the forty-eight inch water main project because those invoices are still coming through. But in terms of what is available that is repurposed from the premium pay we had for the fire department, that's approximately two million dollars.
All right. There's requests there. Can you provide that in writing, please?
Yes, I'll send a copy to you. And I do have the other information you requested for.
Yeah, just, yeah, and then the running tab of fund balance?
Sure. We'll add that.
I mean, because we, we don't know where it is in all actuality, but we're still spending from it. So until we get that audit done, if you could just give us some type of estimate.
Sure, yeah.
All right. Any, any other questions or comments on claims? Here none other, all in favor? Claims? You voted yes? All right, opposed? All right, claims passes. Five to. All right. Payroll?
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number three zero zero eight nine two, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded on payroll. Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Item carries unanimously. Make sure you give a copy of this to the clerk if she hadn't already gotten it. All right. Item twenty?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an order amendment to the sixty-month rental agreement with Pitney Bowes Incorporated to add a cell connection device to post, the postage machine used by the Department of Administration Treasury Division.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed?
Abstained, Mr. President.
All right, I have six and two abstent, no, five. All right, I have six and two abstained, no, five, I'm sorry, and two abstinence. All right, uh, next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for the Three One One Mobile Application Subscription with City Source, Inc.
This one is.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second on this item. Colleagues, uh, the funding source that was identified for this is is the, I'm sorry, is the seven million dollar, uh, loan. And by according to that loan and with the ordinance that goes with it, that money cannot, well, it's only spent for a specific reason. And the only way it could be spent, it had to go before the Water Sewer At-Hoc Committee. All right, did you identify a source to?
Yeah, yes, so, you know, yesterday we did talk about potentially looking at fund balance. But the way we would do it, I know Councilman Food, you requested that the payment comes out of the Technology Fund. So that's what we're going to do. And if we have to offer an amendment just to reflect that the payment will come out of Technology Fund. What we'll subsequently do when we have our our next quarterly meeting, we'll do a budget amendment. And that's just to lower the appropriation that comes from Tech Fund to General Fund for the amounts that are due on those invoices.
So the money's in Tech Fund now?
Right, we'll we'll pay it out of Tech Fund and then we'll do the budget amendment in the next meeting.
Do we need to give you time to get the proper language and account numbers to put it here? I hate to just be wait.
I I yield to legal.
Sandra Monk, your office of the city attorney, um, you could just add to the first therefore order paragraph at the end to be paid out of the Technology Fund.
Colleagues, y'all good with that?
So moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
How much in the fund?
Technology Fund, Councilman Stokes, has a budget of approximately four point two, four point three million dollars.
Is that the mobilization fund?
No, no, thi- this is a just a technology fund. This is where the revenue from the sale towers and some of the franchise fees go to.
Is this money earmarked for something?
So it pays a technology-related expenses for the city. And we've talked about where there there's been a somewhat of a shortfall, primarily because now we we have, we're having to pay the loan that was obtained for the technology equipment, right? That's approximately one point two million dollars that does come out of that fund. The other funds go towards other technology-related expenses for the city. Email systems, servers, and so forth.
Thank you. All right. I I think that that's still, um, that's still fine. I think at the time, we were talking about the amendment that was made in Finance Committee where we added water sewer and drainage issues. I think that it's still fine, it it doesn't have no bearing at this point. My question is, while we have this amendment on the floor, is there another amendment that needs to be made to this item? I thought there were two invoices. Yeah, I I, from my understanding, when we came out of Finance Committee, that that there's, that this is a twenty-two invoice and that there's a twenty-three invoice in order to get the service back active. That is my understanding. Is that is that correct or? It because it doesn't make sense to pay for one and we still not going to get the service?
That is correct. Uh, I think the way the order is written, and I'm trying to find it here, it does account for both invoices.
It, but it just has, okay, it says the cost of the subscription of fourteen thousand, four hundred per year.
Per year, so if you have two years, it's twenty-eight.
So, yeah, it looks like there needs to be another, let's let's vote this amendment first while somebody look at that. All right.
Is the is the order not for twenty-eight thousand? Okay, I can't see it right now.
Yeah, that, somebody can work on that, we're going to make this amendment we have on the floor currently. All right, all in favor on the amendment that we have on the floor currently, which is basically saying Tech Fund, all in favor? Oppose? All right, item carries, the amendment carries six, one. All right, now we have the item on the floor as amended. Is somebody looking at that? Because it does not outline the actual twenty-eight thousand. It's a source, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred, and and if if the invoice was attached or both, I do have the invoice, they just weren't attached. We could say as attached, legal, so. Yeah. Maybe in the one, two, three, four, five, maybe in the fifth, one, two, three, four, five, maybe in the fifth where is where it says, where is the cost of the subscription for two years equals twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred? Okay.
Drew Martin, City Attorney.
Just proposed the amendment.
I think that's fine to make it be two years. And then I think you want to change, uh, you've got the dates and it is further ordered at the end that goes through January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. You'd want to indicate that it's through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, so you're covering both invoices.
All right, uh, go ahead.
And that total amount is?
Twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So moved, Mr. President.
All right, so it's been moved, uh, it's, thank you, Mr. President, it's been moved and properly second that we change, hold on a minute, that we changed the amount to twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred to cover those two years? And that the date be changed to cover through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four?
Isn't that what the invoices say?
Yes.
Yes, then yes.
January, all right, and the date be changed? All, well, all right, that's that's a question.
My question is, is, um, if we just pay up through January thirty-one, twenty-four, are are they going to turn it back on for people to use? Because we're we're now in April of twenty-four, are they going to do that?
Yes.
So we won't, we, we're good to go. The the second point would make that if all these people who ever download this app, we need to make sure that the word is out, made publicly, that that, hey, you can use your app again once this gets put back in place. That's a PR, uh,
We will certainly do that.
But we need to make sure and do that, so people will know to use it now.
Yeah, I I'll I'll tell her to do that.
All right, yes, Councilwoman Lindsay.
And and I would also like some assurance that we will continue paying this so that we don't end up in the same situation in twenty twenty-five.
See? Okay.
Yes, we will do that. We will do that.
Thank you.
Any any other questions or comments? All in favor of this amendment? Oppose? All right, now we have the item on the floor with two amendments. Are there any other questions or comments on this item? All in favor? Oppose? All right, item, uh, passes five to. Next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an MOU with Serological Research Institute for Sexual Assault Testing.
So moved.
Second. Yep, all right, it's removing property second, uh, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute order form and service agreement with Leeds Online.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing Chief Joseph Wade to execute a memorandum of understanding with Heinz Behavioral Health Services, Jackson HMA LLC doing business as Mayor Health Central Hospital, University of Mississippi Medical Center, Brentwood Behavioral Healthcare of Mississippi, City of Byron on behalf of Byron Police Department, Heinz County, Mississippi, on behalf of the Heinz County Sheriff's Department, American Medical Response, the National Alliance on Mental Illness Concerning the Heinz County's Crisis Intervention Team and Singapore of Entry for Persons Identified by the Crisis Intervention Team Officer and Heinz County Mobile Crisis Response Teams as needing medical health, I'm sorry, mental health evaluation, treatment, and stabilization services.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second on this item, any questions or comment?
Yes, question?
Yes.
Chief, excuse me. Did we already have something in place?
Sorry about that. Good morning, Tyrone Buckley, Deputy Chief of Administration. Yes, this is just an annual reoccurring contract that we have to sign every year.
Okay.
So it's already been in place.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Item twenty-five is going to be held, and so we will hold that till further notice from the administration. But as of right now, let's just roll it over. All right, item twenty-six?
Order authorizing the city of Jackson to transfer a non-operational nineteen ninety-nine Fiera Inferno Pumper Vehicle to the Mississippi Department of Corrections, Central Mississippi Correctional Facility.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order approving a professional service agreement with Sunbelt Fire, Inc. to perform required self-contained breathing apparatus fit testing for the Jackson Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a support renewal notice with RICO USA, Inc. for a one-year license for the Web CRD Digital Workflow Solution and Software Maintenance Agreement to be used by the Department of Information Technology Office of Publications.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item, any questions or comments?
Just one comment, Mr. President, and I I just want to applause, uh, Ms. Sheriff over there for recognizing the importance of making sure that there's a proper work workflow in our office which adds to productivity and and efficiency. But other than that, no other comments, just thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding and related documents with the State of Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration to issue funds allocated to Thalmann Mall Hall in the amount of one million, five hundred thousand dollars for renovations and upgrades to Thalmann Mall Hall.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose?
Abstained.
All right, what are you doing, you abstaining? All right, so five and two abstinence. Next item?
Order revising Department of Human and Cultural Services twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item, any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, uh. Ms. Scott, what's all included with this item?
Good morning, Dr. Scott, Director of Human and Cultural Services. You have a question?
What's all included with this item?
There are funds being moved in order to, um, support the, um, summer camp, the film camp for the, um, Jackson Film Office with Kai Williams. We usually give them ten thousand dollars every summer in order to fund the summer camp that they have.
Yes, ma'am. Now, the other funds that you give to community groups, what's the status of that?
Actually, it's with legal. We had eighteen, uh, sixteen applications that were received and reviewed and scored. And we made our recommendations, um, and so legal is reviewing those. And as soon as we get the response back from them, we'll notify the recipients of the award. So soon they should know.
Kind of timeframe we looking at?
Sandra?
Councilman Stokes, what was, what what did you ask about?
The, uh, organizations that receive funds.
Oh, okay.
The grants that come out even though.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. By next meeting, he's saying by next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, this, Dr. Scott, this this ten thousand dollars, this this the same, is this coming from the same person, same line that all the other grant money comes from?
Yes, sir.
All right. First of all, I support you one hundred percent. But, uh, i- is he required to do a match?
I'm sorry.
Is he required to do a match?
He?
It's not him.
Oh, it's not him? Who is this?
No, it's, um.
It's a film, it's a camp, it's a summer camp for kids that the city does.
Oh, this is the city does?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, he he is all things film, but he's not on this one.
I'm sorry, nobody looking at me like that. Okay, all right, all right, we good. All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item?
Order approving yearly membership renewal and authorizing payment to Species Three Sixty for continued use of zoological information management software for the Jackson Zoo.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second on this item, any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Minister, the, uh, on the scale of
David Mohammed Parks and Rec.
Ten being grade, what's the status of the zoo at this point?
Could you repeat the question, please, Councilman Stokes?
On the scale of one to ten, ten being grade, what's the status of the zoo at this point?
I would say a six and a half.
Now, I noticed quite a bit of cars. So I don't know if I'm going to the zoo or what, but I think the tenders, seems like it has increased.
Yes, sir, it has. The only reason why I say a six and a half is because my standards are pretty high, as well as that of the administration. So we have some exciting things that are coming. I don't want to reveal them now, so I'd rather undersell than oversell right now.
Could you, just a suggestion? Can we get some letters to the Delta, they used to come to the zoo on a regular basis? I mean, it was, you know, with schools slowly getting out, the world are changing. It was to see those school buses, it was just routine to see them on Woodrow Wilson. Could we get a letter inviting them?
Who is that again, Councilman Stokes?
The Delta, those school districts in the Delta. You know, invite them to come back to the zoo and, you know, the city of Jackson welcomes you, something like that. Because that, it was just routine to see the different schools coming in on Woodrow Wilson with the yellow buses and they looking for field trips. And, uh, I think the zoo with the programs that's taking place would be a great field trip, not just for the Delta here. Even Jackson Public Schools need to come.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the suggest.
Councilman.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Mohammed. I was fortunate to be out during the movie day.
Yes, sir.
I would love to have it, uh, every month. I think it's a, it's a great venue.
Is that a hint?
I can't, I can't. It was, it was, it was fantastic. Families came out, grandparents with their grandkids, everyone just had a good time. Vendors were there selling stuff. And it also put emphasis on the zoo area itself, so folks can go in and out of the zoo. And I applaud you, I, we recently met, I applaud you for all your efforts to improve Livingston Park. That place is going to be spectacular. And I know you're trying to hold some information close to the chest.
Yes, sir.
But there are some great things going on out there. One thing I would ask, though, is there are signs around West Jackson basically pointing to the zoo or 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 highlighting the zoo. Is there anyone from your staff that checks on those signs? Some of them are down. I don't know whose responsibility it is, but we want to always keep our folks in, you know, in remembrance that we do have a great asset there and they need to be using it.
Well, we can go ahead and reveal part of the, what I'm holding to the breast right now. We are in the works of getting new signs and new displays along with some of the other renovations that we're doing there.
And if I see any out there, I'll try to pick them up and prop them back up and nail them to the pole or whatever they need.
Yes, sir, and thank you, sir. And I'd just like to give a shout to the hard worker staff of Parks and Rec for doing everything to try to make the vision come true.
Yes, sir.
So thank you all for your support.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order requesting approval of future services from from and payments to McMillan Irrigation LLC for provisions of irrigation installation services for rainbird integrated control equipment that has already been purchased by the Parks and Rec Creation Department.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item?
Order requesting approval of professional services from and payments to Facility Services and Remodeling LLC for pool cleaning and related maintenance services for Grove Park Pool, Terry Road Pool. VA Legion Pool, and Vine Street Pool.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any comments?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Doc, is we named the pool for Russell Davis at Mary Jones. Is it gonna be forever closed? If so, can we dig it up and cover it up? The fear is that young people still with water in the pool are getting in and and they call themselves having fun.
Yes, sir.
But they can't swim. They never learned how to swim and the danger of something maybe happening to someone. Now, if it's gonna be remodeled or something done to reopen it, you know, I support that idea. But if it's not gonna be robed because it's just past use usefulness and can't be repaired, then we need to consider, as stated some years back, another location.
Yes, sir. Well, what we plan to do, uh, with that pool is concerning, you're, you're exactly right. There's, uh, several repairs that's gonna be, need to, uh, be done to it. However, uh, with the pools, you can't just drain them out because if you do, then they're gonna, it's literally gonna lift up out of the ground. So what we plan to do is just cover the top of it that'll keep, prevent for the best, um, that we can anybody from getting in. It won't totally prevent them from getting in, but it will keep small children and those from just getting into the pool and then getting, um, being able to get inside of it. So we will cover it until we decide, uh, if we're gonna do that suggestion that we gave a couple of years ago or, or work hard to find some funding to get it, um, fixed.
What, what all does it need?
To be honest with you, Councilman Stokes, and you know, I'm always gonna be, i- it needs a complete overhaul. The pump house in itself uh, needs to be completely, um, changed out, the whole pump house. And so in order to do that, just on a minimum, we're talking real close to about sixty-five hu- uh, sixty-five thousand dollars to do so just for the pump house.
To, to make the necessary repairs, about sixty-five thousand?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right.
No, ma'am. See, if you, if you drain the pool, then they eventually just gonna come out of the ground. It's just a shell that's really inside, that's inside the gr- the ground. So the water actually holds the pool down in the ground. So if you drain it out, within three months' time, you'll literally see it surfacing up. And it will cause more damage than it would than keeping the water in. So it's standard practice in the industry to just put a, a tarp on the top of it, uh, to prevent not only from it coming up, but to try to, um, lessen traffic getting in and out of the pool as well.
All right. Councilwoman Lynn?
Thank you. Um, in the past, I know we've had MOUs with nonprofits or churches to help us run our pools in the summer. Do we have that opportunity again this summer?
Yes, ma'am. We have, uh, our Mill Street Pool, which is gonna be operated by First Baptist. And we're working on a, uh, collaboration with, uh, Terry Road. I don't think that we have an MOU with them, but they have agreed to come aboard to help sponsor some of the things that we need there. So we're continually active, uh, looking for those that will take on the pool and, and operate just as First Baptist is doing with, with, uh, with, uh, Mill Street Pool. Um, but it's, it's been kind of hesitant here and there, just given the, the whole totality of it is that's dealing with it. But we're still, um, as we stated yesterday, um, we can have all of them open, but if we don't have the lifeguards to service them, that's the issue of what we're really looking at. The pools are gonna be ready to go. We made sure of that. What we need now are the lifeguards to secure the openings of the pools. And so that's what we're making a, a strong effort to try to reach out to.
Thank you. Follow up, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, where are we on a water feature at Battlefield?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, that feature, we met with, um, two vendors last month in Cleveland, Mississippi at the conference. One in which I have a, a, um, I have to pull it up. I have a meeting with them on the twenty third of this month, and then another will be in the first part of May. Uh, so we can do an actual walkthrough to look at where we may be, uh, deciding on what to do with that. The, the unfortunate thing is that the cost of the splash pads in the pools are, are of course, you know, they're continuing to go up. So, uh, they understand the, the economics that we're looking at and gonna try to see where we may be at the best finding a solution where that is concerned. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions or comments? And another, all in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order requesting approval of professional entertainment services and payment to DJ Kool-Aid Entertainment for the Flipping Out of Tumbling Event being held on Saturday, April the twentieth, twenty twenty-four at Thaumara Hall.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Doctor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good choice. DJ Kool-Aid is a a great entertainer, I think. Young people would truly, truly enjoy him. It's hard to try to get young people attention if you got the wrong kind of music. Uh, you know, somebody like me playing Johnny Cash or something.
Wait a minute.
Which is. How true would you talk? Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order requesting approval and payment for future professional services to Extreme Jumpers LLC for entertainment services to be provided at the Summer Fun Day Event on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four at Grove Park Community Center.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order requesting approval and payment for future professional entertainment services to Extreme Jumpers LLC and to Party Time Event Service Inc. For services that will be performed at the annual fireworks extravaganza being held on Wednesday, July third, twenty twenty-four at Smith Wills Stadium.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
No, wait, wait, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Councilwoman Lynn?
Um, in the past, um, we've been able to work to get sponsors for this to, uh, so that it really isn't an, an expense for the city.
Yes, ma'am.
Are, are you working on that this year, trying to get sponsorships?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's part of what we got in the back pocket.
Okay.
And, 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 um, if that doesn't come through, Councilman Foot and I have already talked on the side, he's gonna handle it for me.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any, any other que- yes, Councilwoman Lee?
So, Mr. Mohammed, this, Dr. Mohammed, this is, um, for the space jump?
Yes, ma'am.
And the rock wall, but this is not fireworks?
No, ma'am, it's not for the fireworks. It's for the, uh, what we call the children's zone.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute contracts between the city of Jackson and Multicom Inc. for the use of CDBG funds to implement housing repair activities to satisfy, satisfy components of the limited repair program in the Department of Planning.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, uh, Councilman Foot?
Yeah, the, I'd like to offer an amendment just for clarification to the tu- to the title of this order. Because it's really only for one contract for the, um, resident who lives at thirteen eighty-two D- Dorgan Street. Title says, order, order moth- authorizing the mayor to execute contracts. So if we could take contracts and amend that to just say co- contract.
Second.
Well, let, 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 let me ask this question. It may be several contracts with several different contractors that doing different things. Might be a contract with plumbing, the contract with electric. Uh, do, do we know that or is it just one?
It only lists one, Multicom.
Okay, I'm just asking.
I don't know.
Is there a reason why that plural, why it was made plural?
We talked about this yesterday, that's all.
Reginald Jefferson, Deputy Director for Housing and Community Development. Um, now, there's gonna be one contractor for the, for the house, so if we need to amend the order to just say, uh, to execute a contract, that shouldn't be a problem on our end.
All right. Uh, did we have a motion?
In a sec.
All right, so the motion was by
Foot.
Foot.
And the second was by Stokes.
Yes.
All right. All in favor of the amendment? All right. Then we have the item on the floor is amended. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item.
Order ratifying purchases and procurement of services from one vendor and authorizing payment to Jeff Coke Fence Company Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously.
Abstain.
I'm sorry, six and one abstention. Next item.
Order authorizing the Hines County Human Resource Agency to repair roofs on buildings that house the agency's Head Start Program.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Are there any questions or comments?
Question, yes.
Yes, sir. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you.
Vic Sexton, go answer.
Mm-hmm. Vic, I mean, Mr. Sexton, uh, which location and how much we looking at spending?
Well, it, it's all three of the locations, um, Mayor C. Jones, which is in your ward.
Yeah.
Uh, the, um, facility at Martin, Martin Community Center on Road Street and West Side Community Center, um, in, on, uh, Quigons Road. So they're gonna put money into roofing on all of them. And it's a grant that they, uh, must spend within a certain length, length of time. And we're near the end of that particular time period, so we're asking the city council to approve this order, uh, so we can get the buildings repaired.
Now, are they gonna do the whole Jones Center or just in that back part where Head Start?
I think the, the grant just details the repair, what's leaking now. I don't think it's the whole roof.
Okay, now, finally, the, uh, the upstairs of Head Start, they use that for storage.
Yeah, it's only a certain portion of the building that, that they're using by contract. We have a lease with all three of the buildings. I think it's just a portion of that building they're using.
There's many complaints about garbage on the ground.
Uh, I, I'd have to read the lease agreement to see who's responsible for that. I'm sure that they have some responsibility and we might also. But I'll get in, deep into the lease to find out who's ultimately responsible for. But now, um, the lease, I want to make mention to the city council too, the lease is expired. And it's a no, it's a fee-free lease, and we're gonna be bringing the lease before you within the next probably, uh, month or so. Uh, the, we had a no-fee lease that expired in two thousand nineteen. And so we, this is the first, uh, phase of the, the two-step phase to get everything in line with them. So this is the portion just to get them the money so they can go ahead and repair the roofs. And the actual lease for the ten-year renewal will be coming up also. But we're gonna, because of statutes, the statute requires that we get a fee from them. It was delayed, the, uh, process of, uh, getting the, the lease renewed is delayed because it takes a little time to get the appraisals and everything.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order declaring parcel eight two four dash five four eight as surplus property and authorizing the mayor to execute the sale contract deed of conveyance and other documents necessary to said, to sell said property to Curtis Nichols.
So moved. Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir, Councilman Hart?
Yeah, uh, if we have time, I'd love to hear from, uh, Mr. Nichols on the status of the project. I know that this is a part of it, but, uh, how are we doing over it? This is for the Metro Center.
Yes, uh, for the Dillard's Building.
Okay, can you explain a little bit about the project?
Sure. Um, I've had quite a few people come over and take a look at the building, try to get it up to code where we needed to be able to start shooting films. Um, there is a financial, um, amount withstanding to get it where we need it to be. Uh, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with that. Our biggest issue at this moment is that we have, uh, an organized armed ring of copper thieves, uh, with weapons and walkie-talkies that walk across the roof of the mall. Uh, they're out of Rankin County. All of the trucks that come through and pick up stuff are Rankin County trucks. Uh, we have, uh, with the great help of JPD, JPD has been, I, I can't even give them enough credit on how they've been helping us. Uh, we've arrested probably about six, uh, armed suspects that have been taking copper out of the buildings. Um, and there's a lot more. Uh, they, matter of fact, saw one this morning that got away. But outside of that, everything looks, uh, pretty good.
Do you have any deadlines or?
Um, my goal is to have everything ready by October, uh, with the building, so we can start accepting students in to learn this, this craft.
Curtis, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
If there are, and I know that there are for fat, and I know that there have been some mention or questions that there was gonna be some meeting with you, mayor. Um, serious conversations about the stadium
Mm-hmm.
being located on that property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know a lot of that filming and stuff also has to do with filming games, et cetera, et cetera. Would you be willing to work with Jack's stadium in that regard?
Absolutely.
Because it, it would take them tearing that whole thing down.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, I just, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna say it. I support a stadium being right there. I know you don't. But I support it because it will, it will bring West Jackson all the way back. It will be a hotel where the old Clay Mart is. And, you know, I just think it's workable. But there is a group of us alumni that's supporting, but, uh.
And a group that does not.
You are right. It's, it's about a fifty-fifty fight. But, um, uh, I just, I just wanted to know.
Any financial success in, in the city of Jackson helps me. Uh, I'm in entertainment, and it takes people feeling happy to support what I do.
You have restaurants and everything?
If I may.
Go ahead.
I, I have not had any conversations with any alumni groups. Uh, I've talked through, talked with the succession of, of, uh, leadership, uh, about this issue. Uh, it's come up. Um, I don't know what the current appetite is for it with the current leadership, and I don't know what the state's appetite is at this current time, but it is a discussion that has come up in the past.
Yeah, you, you know, my, my thinking is depending on how much money, going back to the same centerpiece, how much money would be given for Memorial Stadium? Uh, that will determine what's feasible. But there are a lot of people that don't want it just close to campus. I get it. I hear you.
Of course.
Hartley, and then you, Councilman Stokes?
Ye- yes, Mr. Nichols. Uh, I think we've had a bunch of discussions and I
Sure.
enjoyed all of them and, uh, and I, I stressed to you the importance of us revitalizing that area.
Yeah.
Uh, students. How many students are, are you looking at?
Well, right now, I volunteer at Jim Hill High School, Powell Middle School, and Jackson State. Um, I ha- I currently mentor about, uh, thirty-five kids with all of them combined. Um, I believe that once the studio is up and going, there's a few celebrities that want to work with these students. Um, so I, I can't even imagine how many. And we've already, uh, partnered with IBM, uh, Labaki, the virtual reality company, and SES Cyber Security. So we're gonna also have those classes there as well.
Okay, and I, I understand we have to debate or comments about a stadium, but right now.
Sure.
Right now, we have you there.
Yeah.
And, uh, what are some of the other benefits to that area and the city that we can look forward to? Of course, uh, pers- uh, personnel, businesses.
Yes.
Et cetera.
So, um, for me to do what I do at the level I'm at now, I need a huge building. And so, uh, this is a perfect location for me with the airport leading directly there. Um, I do believe that I can reach quite a bit of the kids in the neighborhood because of not just what I do and being able to, to give them an opportunity to make money while they're still in school or whether they dropped out of school. But because of my background, I relate to a lot of them and are able to help them that way. But not just the kids, but adults as well.
And stores and businesses?
Yes.
Stores and businesses?
Absolutely.
I think we had talked about
Absolutely.
the need, once you have it in full operation, we're gonna need, uh, um, food vendors and other things.
Yes. So not alone, not just the film studio, but utilizing, so for example, the parking lot in front of the Dillard's Building. We're, uh, in the, we're actually right now designing a western town to fit into that parking lot as a tourist attraction. We're gonna film western, a western TV show, but we're also gonna have like a working western town with actors that, you know, portray westerners, have the shootout and the date at noon and things of that nature to attract more people to the city.
Well, I appreciate everything you're doing, especially the revitalization part right here and right now. And if you ever need a stand-in for And if you ever need a stand-in for the sale of Washington, uh, well, you have my number.
Cool.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. Um, the six, where is, where is the sold bid submitted was from Curtis Nichols in the amount of three hundred sixty thousand dollars?
Yes.
That was, that was your bid?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Three hundred sixty thousand dollars?
Yes, the minimum bid was three fifty.
From, for the old?
Dillard's Building.
That the city own?
Mm-hmm.
So the city's not gonna have any interest any longer in the Metro Center?
No.
Sold.
Any other questions?
All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Resolution of the governing authorities of the city of Jackson, authorizing the mayor to execute documents updating the city of Jackson Public Transit Title VI Discrimination Policy.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order accepting the offer of just compensation for the city of Byram, Mississippi for temporary construction easement and a permanent easement and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant of said easement to the city of Byram.
So moved. Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order ratifying a professional services agreement with HESMNA Consulting Engineers and Mississippi Corporation to design the replacements to the existing HVAC systems for the Mega Evers Library Emergency Replacement and Repair.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lee, what, what kind of timeframe? We're in April and it's warming up. And I think they have a, a rule that if it reaches a certain degree, that they cannot open.
Robert Lee, City Engineer, they've actually already started work as far as on consultant side of things. I'd have to check with them and see what timeframe is on plan and proposal and get that back to you memo or text message.
Okay, now, this is gonna be the library and the, uh, meeting room, the whole building?
We need to, we need to look at the whole thing. I mean, one's kinda chugging along, you kinda pray every day. And the other one's very much dead. You know, if we're gonna spend time on this, need to go ahead and just get rid, you know, take care of both the one that's hanging on and the one that's not hanging on.
Okay, do we have enough money for both?
I believe we do. Because that, we were using the million dollars, uh, that was appropriated for buildings back last budget year, I believe it was.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mayor?
Yeah, since we're talking about HVAC systems, I wanna, uh, let the council know for you and your staff, they'll be working on the HVAC system in this building, uh, Friday. So the air will be, it'll likely be on and off. I don't know what the weather will be, but just wanna let you know so that y'all are, are aware and can plan accordingly.
Is, is it still off now? It's back on? It's back on? Okay, it was off this morning, that's why we laughed.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah, it's cool now. Uh, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing payment to the Mississippi State University Extension Service for commercial pesticide applicator recertification training.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing mayor to execute an engineering services agreement with Myriad Engineering Solutions LLC for the Beasley Road and Shaw Road Bridge Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving property, uh, second on this item.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Um, Beasley Road, how, what kind of timeframe do you, do you estimate it would take to get this done? I have a brother-in-law in.
The bridge itself, once designed, has gotta be bid out. And you have to understand, you know, the county's reached out as far as making some spot repairs, replacing a couple of the bad piles, but everything under that bridge is wood on Beasley Road. It's an old wooden pile bridge and those things are really all are beyond their lifespan. And that's what forced the closure with the inspections was one of the piles was found to be bad. A second pile was hanging on for dear life and probably need to be replaced too. But that bridge itself needs to be replaced because of all the wood piles. Um, once it's designed by Myriad, you gotta go through your typical thirty-day advertisement bid-out period. Construction, once materials are in, can be ninety days. It's prefabricated bridge, similar to one on Colonial Circle, similar one on McRaven Road.
But we had the money.
That, we'd be working for the sales tax commission to ask them for the funds unless other funds came from elsewhere. But the sales tax commission did approve the design on this and five other bridges. Uh, at least we can get the design moving to where there, if funds come from elsewhere, plans are in hand. Funds don't come from elsewhere, whoever's the next person for City Engineer, Public Works Director would, uh, reach out.
How much would the project cost?
Don't have a timeframe, don't have an estimate yet.
No ballpark figure?
I got a ballpark. It's sitting on my sales tax PowerPoint. I have to go pull that and get that to you.
Okay, thank you. The mayor yielded.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Robert, for making sure that the design was approved, um, through the one percent sales tax commission. We are also asking the legislature, um, through appropriations for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the money to repair the bridge if the sales tax commission will not fund it.
And we'll fight to the bitter end until we get that if, if we can. But, um, as Robert, uh, suggested, Supervisor Graham did reach out. I, I think what, I wanna allow them to have that conversation so that, you know, they can, he can talk to their public works director and have a full grasp of what they're offering. Uh, but since they're offering some support to that, if that, what they're offering isn't the solution, then maybe we can take the, the funds that they were willing to provide, the county, that they were willing to provide to that and, and couple it with, uh, other sources to offset. So just wanna have a full, robust conversation. Supervisor Graham called me yesterday, hadn't had the opportunity to talk to Robert until a moment ago, uh, so that they can get together.
Mr. President?
Hold on, Councilman Flit.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, my question is, when was the bridge, first question is, when was the bridge closed?
Uh, State Aid ordered it closed in the last about two to four weeks, roughly in there?
Oh, definitely.
Very, very recently.
Okay, I just hope we can do this quicker than the Colonial Circle Bridge.
At all the bridges.
About two and a half years and, um, I hope we can, you know.
Swale Lake still up?
Connect the dots quick enough.
All right. Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, uh. We just sold Dillard's for three hundred sixty thousand. Can we not earmark that money as a starting point? Uh, see what the county can come up with? You know, the legislature might, uh, uh, I just, it, I don't see them, they might come through, but I don't see it coming through. But it's a lot of ill of the people over there now. And you get used to going one way. That's how some of them go to church, to, to New Hope. And now you putting them into some of that fast traffic, going, hanging moss and everything on those Mustangs. You sure don't wanna get on two-twenty. I, I do not ride it. So could we maybe look at earmarking that?
Do you want, you wanna say earmark or you wanna say appropriate?
Well, either one, if we, if we say earmark, that mean it's gonna be used for that project only. If you say appropriate, that mean we finna do it right now.
I would suggest that we look at that as a potential source. The one percent is, is applied to deal with infrastructure issues. We have not, in, in fairness to them, it hasn't been presented and rejected. So I think that we should try that first and if that doesn't work, then, then go back to other things.
We have to keep in mind there are four bridges that are out.
This is for two. This is Beasley Road and Shaw Road. The next item for Civil Tech is Smallwood and Alice. And then we're waiting on, uh, EJES provide a proposal for the two on Colonial Club, I mean, uh, Country Club, the one that's closed, and then the one there at Peter Quinn that's quite honestly hanging on.
And I have to say, I, I went to, um, Justice Gibbs to help me write the appropriation because of a response I received on social media from Pete Perry saying that they weren't gonna help me fund it.
Well, in spite of the fact that Mr. Perry believes that he runs the one percent commission and is the chairman of some sort, um, I think that we have well-intentioned, you know, considerate people that if the case is made, I think that they'll be willing to hear it. So I don't think he speaks for everybody on that board.
Uh, Attorney Mark, can you get that order back to us immediately? Appointing him chair, so that we can go on and correct that? Get that, get that to us immediately so we could correct that? All right, uh, Mr. Lee, um, first of all, you gonna be missed. Um, my, I, I guess my concern is, I know that the state is mandating that these bridges close. I know that if we were staffed with the engineers necessary, there should be some type of way for us to see that there are problems and begin doing some of the preliminary work before they even mandated be closed. The problem I have, like for example, with Swale Lake, that's been, how long has it been? About a year and a half?
Hmm, probably longer.
Two years, in the middle of a community closed. And, and I think the part that's hard to bear is they mandated close, but we don't start doing the preliminary work until after it's closed. And that, that, that means they're looking at seven, eight, nine months. In Byram, right there on Terry Road, when they closed that bridge, a week later, it was back. They, they, they did all the engineering work. They did, they ordered the bridge. They had everything done before they closed it. But that's because, I guess, maybe they had somebody on staff to know that they needed to address these things and have those plans done before the state said, you just gotta close it. And so in the future, you know, well, you're not gonna be here in the future. Whoever's gonna be here, um, if there is a way to make sure that, that they're assessing these bridges ahead of time, because what happens is the state comes in, they close it, and then we just now start engineering work. We just now studying. Everybody tries to do it and then the citizens end up out of luck. Because like in Swale Lake, and you know about it, um, it's been over two years. And that, that's just hard for the citizens.
Well, let me say this, there are moments that we, we have advanced knowledge about the deterioration of a bridge and we work proactively. Uh, unfortunately, we have a few more bridges to maintain than Byram does, right?
I get it.
Yeah, and, and so it, it takes, you know, a more full effort. And then also, a bridge like Rhodes is a competing infrastructure challenge where we, we have not a lack of political will to do these things, but a lack of resources, right? And so I, I get your point, uh, and, and I think that, that we can, uh, certainly endeavor to be more proactive as, as we possibly can. But even right now, it still becomes, at the end of the day, like we know the bridge is closed and, and we're looking at it, it becomes a money question. Where are we getting the money, uh, in order to deal with these? But I do wanna, you know, Robert Lee has been there, you're knowing about this one now, but we present in the one percent meetings, all kinds of bridges that have not been closed. And he's looking at the status of those bridges and saying, look, this is something that is coming. The state hasn't closed them. This just happens to be a few that unfortunately, uh, and, and I wanna say gratefully have been closed because, you know, what we're seeing across the nation are bridges that are, you know, there's some interrupting forces, right? But bridges that, that have not been held in a solid condition and, and, uh, we don't want that experience in Jackson.
Look, Mayor, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, we still got a whole lot more bridges. I'm just gonna just get ahead of the game, even if that means, you know, when we first heard that, you know, they were gonna close these bridges, even if that means hiring an engineering firm and going to assess all the doggone bridges that need to be assessed so that we could get ahead of the game. Um, and, and, and our citizens won't have to be without their normal transportation routes for such a very long period of time. And I think we all can agree that that, that that's unfair. And we do know that there are forces that come in and just do that. And they might know it, they might have known it last year, but don't say nothing until they get ready to mandate it be closed. You understand what I'm saying? So just trying to find a way to prevent the citizens from being in a bad place. All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Uh, forty-six.
Order authorizing SP Plus Corporation to dispose of parking meters being replaced through the Parking Meter Management Program and authorizing all revenue from their disposal to be applied to the cost of removal of the existing meters and the associated repair of sidewalks.
So moved. Second.
All right, if, uh, City Attorney Williamson would state the amendment on forty-six? I, I can't understand your writing.
You can't understand my writing? Now, I've never heard, I, 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 the last, the last comment I heard from somebody.
Let me try to wait, figure that, all right.
Okay, I got it.
It is therefore ordered, the, it is therefore ordered, the motion is that we strike of no value to the city other than their value.
That's okay, let him read it.
As, and then replace with have a fair market value of zero?
That's correct.
Is there a second?
I don't know what was said. I don't understand. Can you, can you say it?
Just say it. She trying to say I can't tell.
All right, so currently it reads, um, it is therefore ordered that the existing parking meters of the city of Jackson are declared to be obsolete and of no value to the city. Um, it needs to say, uh, it is therefore ordered that the existing parking, parking meters of the city of Jackson are declared to be obsolete and have a fair market value of zero, period.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved and properly second on that. Now, let me ask you this. So if it has a fair market value of zero, what happens to the old meters?
Well, what's gonna happen is when they replace, so when they replace those, they have no value as meters.
Right.
So they're going, they're going to dispose of those as scrap metal.
Okay.
And, and, and the reason it wouldn't make any sense to have somebody else dispose of them as scrap metal is because we'd have to store it and, you know, there'd be storage costs and it would eat up any value that they would have, so.
Okay, all right. Any other question? Yes.
Where are we on the meter project?
That's planning. That, I, I think, um, the estimate was, uh, I think we talked about this yesterday. I don't remember. I, I don't wanna mistake.
But this is the first phase is to replace, remove.
Yeah, Councilwoman Lindsay asked the question yesterday and, and they gave her a timeline. I don't remember.
Yeah, I, I, I believe, so what the timeline would be with this, this is gonna proceed like within either, you know, beginning, you know, next week, probably beginning next week, they're gonna start removing, uh, the old meters. And, uh, then they're gonna put out, then they'll start putting out the signage for the kiosks and then the kiosks. So, um, I would say that probably a month from now, we should have new, new kiosks out on the city streets.
I do want to kind of, you know, advise everyone that, that even when we get the new kiosk, that isn't the completion of the process, right? Like, in order to have a revamped parking metering system, then there has to be, you know, some realignment of, of enforcement, right? And, and how we're dealing with that. And so there's a lot, lot of, you know, it's taken a minute, but there's a lot of work that, that, you know, takes place in order to make this effective.
Well, I, I, I can report on that part, that, um, you know, the group has been working and, uh, generally the enforcement should be ready to go even before the kiosks are out there. I mean, they're, they're, you know, they'll be writing tickets for people who, um, you know, are improperly parked if they're, you know, parked on the sidewalk or something like that.
And when I say enforcement, I'm not talking about their ability to write tickets. I'm talking about our ability to go after them if they don't show up in court. I'm talking about our, you know, all of those things, 'cause we have a stockpile of people with traffic tickets.
Yes.
Will there be a PR movement ahead of this to let businesses know? Okay, constituents?
Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? All right, item carries six-one. Uh, next item. Oh, that was the amendment. All right. Yeah, that was the amendment. Now we have the item on the floor is amendment. All in favor of the item, uh, uh, and the item is amendment? All right, oppose? Item carries six-one. Next item, thank you.
Order ratifying procurement of equipment, repairs, and services from various vendors and authorizing payment to said vendors for the Department of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moving property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Is this item, just reading it, when will, um, Jackson Water be responsible for?
Forty-seven.
Yeah, I, yeah, I was thinking, I was reading back, it go back to 2022 water plant emergency.
So Jackson Water's responsible going forward, but these come before, before that time.
Jackson Water started November 29, 2022. The water plant emergency, that was city, and we were working with FEMA, MEMA. Ted didn't even know Jackson existed at that time.
Okay.
We are, Fidelis's team's gonna work with the FEMA, MEMA folks as far as some reimbursements tied to that emergency, but still, these are expenditures that do need to be paid. And because of the emergency and the procurement processes in place out at the plant, we do need to ratify these old invoices, particularly with the compressed air technologies. Ratify that account, so pay it, and then seek reimbursement through FEMA, MEMA. And Fidelis will be leading that.
Now, the issue is old invoices. These are pretty, pretty old, right?
These are old, but they're not beyond statute limitations. There was actually three from another vendor in here that was removed because of statute limitations.
Did they turn them into us later, what?
They were turned in sometime last year, and it's something that's fallen through the cracks as we were trying to work on cleaning up the house in the last year.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Jackson is on the map. All right, all in favor? Oppose? Item carries five-two. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a construction, engineering, and inspection services agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc. for the 48-inch water line project.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item, any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Which, which 48 inch, we have so many, which one is this old?
Yes, and, and I just want to say that they've been working diligently on this. They have a challenge where they're dealing with the, the rail, the rail company, and getting permission to go under, you know, under the rail where it intersects. And so that's been a, a challenge, but they've been working on this for a while now.
With the complaints we hear from Channel Three on this situation, what kind of timeframe before we drew with this completely?
I had a meeting with utility contractors, contractors, Neil Schaefer, water engineer. All the work starts underground.
Sorry. With all the work mostly undergrounds complete, other than below Rankin Street, Neil Schaefer's working with Jackson Water to schedule when they can make the connections to tie that 48-inch into the system, which also allow, hopefully, retire the old 24-inch line along the old railroad track. The par of the 48 below Rankin Street is not gonna be activated. That's where we ran into an issue with the railroad, and they found a workaround to tie it into the big line on Rankin Street to get the water around to South Jackson as intended.
Now, you say it's not gonna be?
Correct. From Rankin Street down to the Interstate Bridge, you know, the pipe's not been put in, some of that pipe's not been put in the ground. They ran into an issue with getting under Illinois Central Canadian National. So instead of trying again, they found a hydraulic workaround to make it work without having to go back and try again to go under the railroad down in the swamp.
Is it gonna be successful?
It will be successful. It had, Jackson Waters looked at it, they've had their engineers looked at it. They're confident that the Plan B will work, and I have my confidence in them.
When would this project be completed?
That will depend on Jackson Water's ability to be able to schedule the tie-ins, those connection points. There's about four of them between Rankin Street and the plant, including one out in the middle of High Street, out in the middle of the intersection. They're at Chimneyville, or it used to be Chimneyville. They haven't given a timeframe for that. It depends on other work going on at the water plant.
Is Jackson Water, money still froze, or not being, I guess?
This is independent of that, this is ARPA-funded, the city ARPA funds that we held on to to finish the project. This, this, we've got the, that in the bank, and we're moving forward with it. This, any issues with EPA and that will not affect this.
Thank you.
Mayor? I just want to say for the record that what this 48-inch line accomplishes is to improve water pressure to South Jackson. And, and so when we're talking about the areas where they're, where this work is going on, it may not immediately be associated with South Jackson, and so I want people to know.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an engineering services agreement with Civil Tech, Inc. for the Smallwood Street and Alley Street Bridge Replacement Project.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item.
Order menning the fiscal year 2024 budget of the City of Jackson Department of Public Works.
It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes, what's included?
We have a couple of things going on here. In infrastructure management, particularly paved streets, we're actually running way ahead of asphalt materials expenditure compared to what we had done in the last two or three years. During the budget last summer, we moved about half of the, well, actually about two-thirds of the asphalt materials that was not gonna be used. Based on 23, we used, we budgeted for 24, but split it between materials and contract. Well, they've actually gone through about 80% of their materials as budgeted, the $200 and something thousand compared to what they spent in the last two or three years. So we're taking the contract money in Fund One and putting it back into materials so that paved streets will have asphalt materials to do pothole patching with. Because they've actually been spending a lot more money on asphalt this year, because all they're doing is potholes. They're not doing the larger utility cuts that require more work, but less asphalt materials. I can brag and say they're doing more this year as far as potholes compared to previous years. This is independent of what the council set aside during budget time, which was the hundred grand per ward. That's in Fund 372, the modernization tax. And that shows up in, when it's printed out in munis, Ward One, Ward Two, Ward Three, et cetera. But that's in the modernization tax fund, and that does actually roll from calendar year or fiscal year to fiscal year. This is the general fund money where we want to make sure that, you know, we spend the money. If not, come October 1, it goes to fund balance.
Thank you.
The second thing is in traffic, looking at their, their salaries so far and their vacancies. James Caldwell, who we hired back as our infrastructure manager, I was very glad to be able to get him back in, in the fold. His work is cut out for him as far as, you know, in traffic, getting, you know, recruiting and trying to get folks in. But they still have unspent salary from the first quarter of the year that can be spent elsewhere. So what we want to do is move this into the line item we created for tra, contract traffic signal maintenance, which is a 64-60 line item. And then in the sign shop, sign manufacturing shop, move that into a line that they can do some procurement of signs if necessary. If they need to buy specialty signs, based on just having one person in the shop right now, they can order out for signs if necessary. Which usually come May, June, they will start stocking up as we go into that period in June where they tell us to not really buy anything, because they're starting to look at the fiscal year closeout.
What about the lady that was with traffic that we trained some years ago? And I think she went to Madison County, to Ridgeland or somewhere. Can we recruit?
No, she wasn't in Signal, she's in Paved Streets.
No, this was the, this was the first black lady to do signals. I mean, they really trained her, and she was good, and I think she went to.
Clinton? If it's who I think it is, I saw her working on the red light at the quick trip on Spring Ridge Road about three months ago.
Can we bring her back then?
I will leave that to James to recruit somebody that might actually used to be his employee.
She was great, and the old, old timers taught her.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee.
So, Robert, Mr. Caldwell, you said you brought him back, so he has some institutional knowledge about our traffic lights?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so he'll be taking over our traffic lights?
He's over our infrastructure maintenance, so that's maintenance of streets and bridges and drainage and traffic. And parking meters fall under him too. So as far as our maintenance side of things, I know I'm leaving, but I have full faith and confidence in James to help where we got everything running, keep it running. Where we need tweaks and improvements, make those tweaks. And where we need a lot of work in recruitment, recruit. And I said, when we were having interviews with him and the other candidates, recruitment is key, because we gotta, we gotta recruit to bring folks to Jackson.
Will you give us an opportunity to meet with him before you leave?
I will leave that to Louis and.
I need somebody I can call, like I called you 24/7.
Who can I call? Ghostbusters?
While I have you here, Robert, and before you leave me, what's going on with my Brierwood light in front of Cowboy Maloney in that shopping center where we tore it?
That, I think, is the cabinet, and I believe, that is on, you know, if council proves this in the next about two minutes, we'll be sending the list. I've already got about 25 intersections and three school flashers. And Sam, here's my budget, here's my priorities and general priorities. What can I get done with the funds available?
Cooper Road on there?
Yes.
Medical Mall?
Yes.
We're just trying to get it while you're here.
Thank you, Robert.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I mean, since he broached this subject, first of all, you're, you're gonna be leaving. And, and I've known you for decade over decade, and been a joy working with you, and you're gonna be sorely missed. I appreciate you having Mr. Caldwell come on board, convinced him to come back to the city. He is, he is number one. Any tips for me as a councilman when we have other candidates come up to say, what should we be looking for in your replacement?
What, what you need in a.
What's the key thing?
What you need in a city engineer and senior engineers, because one engine, one, first, one engineer cannot do this for the City of Jackson. Let's just keep water and sewer out of the picture for a second for what we have. Streets, bridges, drainage, traffic, the architectural side, when architectural projects are put to us, and then just the day-to-day stuff, things that are not contracts. Go into NPO meetings, go into ADA meetings, making sure that, you know, knowing things that you need to get done and including them in projects. For example, at the fast lane at the liquor store at 55 and North Side, one of the big complaints from the ADA committee was there was a gap of 200 feet of the sidewalk where the grass was. So when that finally came to site plan, and having that in the back of my head, I said, put this sidewalk in, and they said yes. Little things like that beyond just your capital projects. So that institutional knowledge, you know, you can learn it pretty quick. With James here, that'll help, working with James.
Right.
I will call.
Yeah, we need his cell number.
Thank you, thank you for your service here with the cities, so it's very much appreciated.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I, I know this item is going on a little long, but you won't be at the next meeting. And so I do want to take this opportunity just to say thank you for all your dedication and hard work and for answering our phone calls all hours of the night and day. I mean, you've been exemplary, and we're gonna miss you beyond belief. I was sitting here as you were explaining all of this, going, Mr., who's gonna explain all this at the next city council meeting? So I'm hoping that we, I don't think we can replace you, but I hope we find somebody to fill this position as soon as possible. But we will miss you and we wish you nothing but the best during your next endeavor.
Yes, yes.
Amen. Mr. Lee? All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Next item.
Order accepting the quote of Jackson Blueprint and Supply, Inc. for scanning services and authorizing payment.
So moved. It's been moved properly second on this item, any questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an FY 2024 joint, joint funding agreement with the United States Department of Interior, U.S. Geological Survey for Water Resources Investigation.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved properly second on this item, any questions or comments? Mr. Wright, you, you, you gonna have two jobs. Because, you know, you gotta oversee all these departments, but then, you know, as Councilwoman Lindsay just said, who gonna get up here and explain all the stuff that Robert Lee explains?
Louis Wright, CAO, I can assure you that we will take care of all of these issues to your satisfaction.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, all in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one to the contract of Dickerson and Bowen, Inc. for construction of the street resurfacing project Phase 1A.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second on this item. Any questions or comment? All right, all in favor? Item carries unanimously, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase order agreement with pedestrian limited liability company for the purchase of a pedestrian, pedestrian crossing safety system demonstration unit.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved properly second on this item, any questions or comment? Yes, Councilwoman Lindsay, we'll start in this coming.
As I said yesterday in work session, I'm not gonna be able to support this item because the ADA council opposes it. And I, I'm, I don't have any explanation about why I should support it. And so they have come out pretty strongly in opposition, so that's.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes, basically for the same reasons she spoke, and I've spoken with my constituents that are, that are part of that council, and, and I'm not, I won't be able to support it as well.
Yes, first and foremost, we have the, the inventor, Ms. Helen Dowdell Brown on the phone, on the line there. So she's here to explain it. We received those letters as well. In fact, they said that it was unproven technology, which we're clear that they had a misunderstanding that we were putting these signals at traffic lights all across the city. This is going, this is in one location, and the point of it is to test the technology. It is a pilot. I don't think that there was understanding that it was a pilot. And so to say that it's untested technology when the point is to test the technology is, you know, a bit, a bit confusing. And, and lastly, I have been one of the most staunch supporters of the ADA community from revamping J-Trans to even after we were done with our consent decree on sidewalks, ensuring that, that we held to that agreement. And so I, I certainly don't say this in opposition of our ADA community, but I'm saying this as an effort to become a more ADA compliant, a more inclusive community. We want to better understand this technology. But if council president would allow, she was unable to be here in person, she doesn't live in the City of Jackson, if you would allow her to give a, a brief explanation as to what this is.
Let me ask this question. And, and I know in zoning, we deal with this a lot. And, and Mayor, in zoning, when these type of issues come up, even though there may be an explanation, we still oppose and hold a line until those who have the presentation or whatever take the opportunity to get with the ADA. All right, and I, I don't know, you know, they, they are the ones with the complaints. I hear what you're saying, but has anybody had taken the opportunity to show them this video and to have the opportunity to talk with them about these concerns? And, and again, our practice is, and you correct me if I'm wrong, during zoning, even though they explain it, and it could be 100% right, we don't take any action until they actually get with the people who are. even though they explain it, and it could be 100% right, we don't take any action until they actually get with the people who are complaining.
And that's fine. The opportunity here for you to get an explanation, uh, is still present, uh, whether you want to take that up or not, and, you know, as you can see, I just go according to your votes. If you vote against it, then I just.
Go tip.
We, we, yeah, we, we don't have to vote against it. We could withdraw the second and the motion.
Yeah, well, well, let's do that.
And put it, and put it in committee and have a public hearing and allow ADA, allow them, allow them all come, and then let there be a formal presentation before them.
That's fine. So you don't want the presentation right now?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
All right.
That, I just wanted to say thank you. I think that's withdrawing and, and holding this item until everybody gets a chance to get all the correct information is appropriate, Mr. President.
Who, who made the, who made the second motion? Who withdraw? Lee and Harley.
Did I make the first motion? I retract my motion.
They, they got you, Dan.
So we can't speak at all?
All right, uh.
Ms., Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown, they have asked if you would meet with the ADA community first. The ADA council, I'm sorry, yes, that's more precise, the ADA council. Uh, and then, uh, this item can be re-presented to them, uh, but they want you to meet with them first. So if you could schedule, uh, a meeting with the ADA council.
I'm sure that's definitely something that, um, can happen. We did receive, we do have a letter, a letter of support from Herbert Humphrey, who was the ADA coordinator, as well as a couple of our advocates who are on, currently here on the line.
Yeah, Ms. Brown, thank you. We, we don't have anything on the floor right now, but we will, our clerk's office will get in touch with you. What we'll do is have a committee meeting and, um, um, call you so that we can have a public hearing and invite the ADA council. Let's put it in, um, public safety? Councilwoman Lindsay? Let's put it in public safety. Yes, sir.
I'd ask that you invite Commissioner Simmons too, uh, because he, he's the one who made the connection here.
Yeah. We'll, we'll invite all that we need to invite. You know, at the end of the day, we just want to make sure that we engage those councils, those citizens, those peoples necessary, uh, before we take action. All right, uh, next item.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an insurance services agreement between the city of Jackson, Mississippi and Fisher Brown Broad Trail Insurance Agency.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved properly second on this item. Any questions or comment? Question? Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Uh, what's all included in this item? Yeah, Mr. Johnson? Oh, Drew? Either way.
Y'all are both waiting on each other.
Brian Johnson, Executive Vice President of F B by, F B B I Insurance. Uh, included in this item is a consulting agreement, um, in reference to, uh, number of policies, including in that agreement is also, I think, Councilman Stokes, an analysis that you have called for, I know many times, in reference to the city of Jackson being, no longer self-insured fully, but looking at a self-insured retention and having excess coverage in reference to commercial auto and liability coverages.
Is this contract, is this agreement, will it expire September 28, 2024? Is it?
No, uh, I don't have, I, I submitted a contract to Attorney Martin, and I don't, I don't have what's before you. I have not seen any changes or anything of that, so I'm gonna have to defer to him. It should expire in 2027, I believe, so.
I thought, I, I know I printed this, and it looks like I didn't put it in my bag before I left. There's a couple of minor terms to work out, and I, I'll be honest, I can't remember the term in the contract. What was in the contract that we removed on behalf of the city was workers' compensation coverage, because that's provided elsewhere. Otherwise, I think, and there were a couple of things that we talked about this morning, uh, that I sent over. Here we go. Yeah, so, so some of the, some of this isn't in the version I had, so Brian and I are gonna get together after this to work out the details. It's a pretty short contract, and it covers, uh, what Brian has just referred to, other than workers' compensation.
Now, it's, it's the last way is. May I authorize to execute an insurance service agreement, Fisher Brown, Broad, Broad Trail Insurance Agency, Brian Johnson for a term ending September 28, 2024.
That would have been, uh, so we'd want to amend that. I think the, I think the contract I saw went through 2025. There may be a negotiation left in terms of the full term.
Then we go to the contract agreement under number two, period of performance. The term of disagreement shall commence on November 21, 2023, and shall expire on November 21, 2024.
I, I think that that's an old copy that, that should not be there. I mean, we, we have not commenced any agreement prior to the council.
This is what we vote on. So if it's not right, you know, make some amendments now so you can get it right.
So typically, uh, Councilman, what, when the council votes to authorize the mayor to enter into the contract, the mayor will then negotiate the terms of the contract. The contract that's before you, I believe, was, that should have been removed. That's, that's an older version that Trustmark and Broad Trail did not approve, and so we sort of went back to the beginning. We have a, a shorter contract that Broad Trail did approve.
I'm talking about the order. This is the order.
I understand.
What are the proposed amendments for this order?
The, the only proposed amendment for the order that I'm aware of was that the term would be for, the term would not end in '24, no matter what. So Mr. Johnson's saying he thought he had a '27. The version I saw was '25.
All right, so September 28, '27, 2027. Is that a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right.
Yeah, so the contract that I have, that was presented to me that I was sent, uh, and that I think had been previously reviewed by Mr. Wright, and, and I think by Council President Banks, had '25 in it. So I didn't hear '27 until this morning.
Where is it?
I'm sorry.
Where is it?
I haven't, I haven't seen a contract that says '27 in it. The contract version that I saw that I was reviewing had '25 in it.
And for clarification, the reason I am saying '27, I submitted this contract last year in June.
Yeah.
So we're almost a year, so we're, we're a year behind, and that's the only reason that extra year is going on there, so.
All right, so, so, so colleagues, remember when this was first submitted, uh, the previous city attorney, was, was, yeah, placed this on the agenda, and at that time, F B B I and Trustmark's legal team has not had the opportunity to review it. It was in committee for quite some time, um, for a while, and I think once it finally got reviewed, you know, for the sake of trying to make sure that we get the services and don't have any lapses, we wanted to go in and try to do this. So I guess the question is, the changes that are necessary in this order that we have before us today, tell us, or can you instruct or direct us what amendments we need to make based on the agreement and discussions that have been had between the administration and Mr. Brian Johnson?
So I think that the short answer to that is, uh, I don't think we have a complete meeting of the minds between the parties for, for at least some of these terms, and so if the, if the council wants to be fully apprised of all of the terms of the contract before it votes, then.
In, in general, in general, for the order, are there any amendments that need to be made in this order? Let me see, let me pull the order. They don't have a meeting of the mind.
Do I can I?
Go, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
If you recall, um, and Councilman Banks has updated you, but this came through Finance Committee and was approved, and it's here before you today. You know, we, I, I, I informed the administration of the necessary changes, but, you know, here we are, so hopefully they can be made at this time.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, I'm not here recommending against any of the proposed changes. I'm saying that some, some of the proposed revisions I saw for the first time this morning, and I just haven't had a chance to put them into the contract or compare them. So the order as it appears, and, and for one more piece of background, I think this first became before the council in November of '23. I believe that the, uh, uh, contract, the proposed contract that is attached to this agenda item is what was before the council at that time. The council voted to put it into committee. It came out of committee, I guess, last week. Ye- yes, sir.
Yeah, it was placed in the committee at the request of Mr. Johnson, uh, because the changes that had been made to the contract, neither he nor his company had had an opportunity to review those changes that were placed in the contract.
And those were ultimately rejected, or se- or many of them were.
Yeah, and. Let, let me, let me ask this, if it's possible, because the changes, as I understand them, that have been sent to me aren't that voluminous.
Agreed.
Uh, if we can pass on this item and come back before the end of the meeting.
That, that's how we ask, we just ask for the minute, but he's saying, so look, let's, let's just do this, and, and I, I agree with the mayor's guidance. If we can withdraw the second and the motion, and you all directly come up with what those changes need to be, then we'll bring it back before this meeting, uh, ends, okay?
I withdraw my motion. Wait, we have an amendment?
There's an amendment on the floor.
All right, I, all right.
I withdraw my motion to the amendment.
Who, who seconded that? I withdraw my second to the amendment. Now we need to get the item off the floor. Who did that?
I withdraw.
Same thing? All right, and I withdraw my second. Mr. President? Yes. Even though we don't have an item on the floor, it was my intention to vote on this item in favor of it, but you hear legal said, they don't have a meeting of the mind. No, we get it, we get it, that's what. Trying to rush this, we need to bring it back at a special meeting, or bring it back to next council meeting, which will give everybody a chance to see and talk to everybody, but I can't support this not knowing, even if we, they say today, well, we agree on this, we agree on that, it is fully put together. Let's give them an opportunity to look at it, and then let's discuss it properly.
I think I can have, uh, I think I can have the current version back here before the meeting concludes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Stokes. All right, um. So we're from item 55, item 56.
Order authorizing the city of Jackson to ratify services provided by GetCom for the installation of cable for the office of the clerk of council.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded on this item. Uh, any questions or comments?
Uh, question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir. I know what you're trying to ask. Would, would the clerk comprises of where this money's coming from?
Shanika Jordan, clerk of council, um, the, a couple months ago, the council revised the budget to add money into our, um, I guess, tech fund, and we're using this money out of that fund.
All right, now historically, uh, when we came to these type of items, where did it come from?
The tech fund.
The general tech fund, so we had to create our own tech fund to take care of our items. Well, the reason I, I, my concern, we still don't have proper phone service. That is true. Yes.
So will this increase our speed? Because we have no internet in this building.
No, this is only for our additional clerks that we added during budget season.
Okay.
Um, we, um, created a space in our office on the second floor.
Okay, and so do they have, uh, access to munis?
They have access to munis.
Okay.
But not.
But not what?
The information that we have been requesting.
Okay, so what, what is this gonna do?
This is just to provide them network, to be able to get on the internet and to do their job.
So when will we get our phone service? That's an IT question.
I cannot answer that about the phone services.
So, so.
This is only for the network.
So what, 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 what we did, colleagues, was we took, in, in the past, when we had issues, we would make a request from the tech fund to get issues fixed, because we're a part of the city. That did not happen, so we took the money from the tech fund and put it in a line item in the council's budget for our own tech fund, basically, right? Tell me what we.
We, um, moved the money from our legal services, $40,000.
From our legal services, that is correct. We moved it from our legal services to create our own tech fund, uh, since that courtesy is not being extended to us anymore. All right, all in favor?
The courtesy of the phone service?
No, all tech items by council, that money would come from the technology fund.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not confused about that.
Okay.
So, so I understand that there's a, there's a delay on phones?
Well, that, yeah.
They're not working.
They're not working.
Okay. Uh, well, we'll note that for our IT, uh, to get their phone service.
So Mayor, the, the practice that we adapted, instead of just waiting and people not responding in a timely manner, that we'll just appropriate the money ourselves and find a way and go and get our stuff fixed, because they need the internet.
I mean, it's still gonna have to coincide with everything, so, yeah, so I don't, I don't know that there, I just want to be clear that the inter, the, the administration doesn't have any objection to y'all having, you know, I, I was unaware until this very moment that you were even having that issue, so, uh.
We talked about it when we moved the money the first time.
Whether I was in, was, was I in the room at the time? I don't, I may have been.
Yeah.
So I, 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 sincerely, I was unaware that you, you had this issue, so, I mean, either way, where, regardless of where the money comes from, it's gonna have to be coordinated, so we'll make sure that we deal with that.
All right.
I've been anything from being voted on, but we're gonna have to coordinate.
No, I'll just, you know, all right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Item carries unanimously. Uh, next item.
Resolution of the city council of Jackson, Mississippi, in support of the South Jackson Parade and Festival.
So moved. Second.
You can give it to him. I'll help start that thing. All right, uh, any other questions or comments? Mr. Griselle, please, sir.
Thank you. Colleagues, uh, this is our fifth annual, uh, South Jackson, uh, Parade and Festival. It's a great time. The parade will begin promptly at 9:00 a.m., and then we will have a festival, kind of like a community block party on the campus of Cardozo Middle School. Councilman Banks and, um, I guess now, what's the Keith's title? Public Service Commissioner. They're, they are always there to line up the vehicles. We have communities represented actually from all over Jackson. We have all of J P S bands coming. I think we got Jackson State All Corner and Valley bands coming this year. So it's, just come on out and have a good, clean, family-oriented time. Thank you.
Go ahead. You, you know, J, J P D, just last time, um.
Yeah, we know about that.
Yeah, just, just, just be aware.
About the people?
The, the, those people that were harassing, okay.
Yeah, I just want to commend, uh, all of you for your work on this. I remember your first South Jackson Parade. Uh, it has really grown, uh, from where it started. I, I don't even know if we knew where the route really was the first time. We were just kind of walking.
We made it up.
But, uh, it's really grown and, and, um.
Somebody tripped in a pothole that was on your staff.
It wasn't me, so I, we'll, we'll, we'll let you, we'll, we'll let you take that up with, with him. But, um, no, I just wanted, I think the community really appreciates it, so I want to thank y'all for this.
Thank you, and I want to also just reiterate, it's April 13th, this Saturday, at 9:00 a.m. And the parade route is from Robinson Extension to McDowell, up McDowell to 18, but we're right there at, uh, Cardozo Middle School. Thank you.
All right, and you got another parade coming up first Saturday in May?
Okay, all right. I'm excited about that one too, because that's, yeah, I'm excited about that. All right.
That's right. All in favor? All right, Councilwoman Lee, if you want to start a North Jackson Parade, by all means.
That's okay. The mayor and I will get together.
We just finished complimenting y'all on y'all's South Jackson Parade, and then you want to make it a rivalry.
We'll have a route identified.
All right, uh, item 58.
Order of the city council of Jackson, Mississippi, implementing a salary increase for the Jackson Police Department, paying the police officers higher than any other police agency in the region.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded on this item. Mr. President, can I have the clerk to read the body, please?
Order of the city council of Jackson, Mississippi, implementing a salary increase for the Jackson Police Department, paying the police officers higher than any other police agency in the region. Whereas the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city of Jackson shall be considered by this order, and whereas the city council of Jackson, Mississippi, recognized the dedication and sacrifice of the Jackson Police Department in serving and protecting the residents of the city of Jackson, and whereas. the residents of the city of Jackson, and whereas it is imperative that we attract and retain the best and most qualified individuals to serve on the Jackson Police Department, and whereas competitive salaries are essential in recruiting and retaining top talent in law enforcement. Therefore, it is thereby ordered that the city council of Jackson, Mississippi hereby implement a pay increase for the Jackson Police Department, paying the police officers higher than any other police agency in the region.
Thank you. Mr. President, uh.
Yes, sir.
At one time in this city, the, uh, Jackson Police Department was respected and recognized all over the state as the top law enforcement agency in the state of Mississippi. A state in the region, but I should have said throughout the state. We had an avenue of pride. People who wore the badge and wore the uniform had such great pride. We must put the pride back with JPD. And it started with compensating them. These officers need to be back on the top level of being paid. These officers answer more calls than any police department in this state, but yet they not compensated. And when you think about the number of calls they answer, normally, there used to be three or four different officers answering these calls for services. Now it's one. Sometimes you can get overworked, underpaid, and you get burned out. It's time for the city of Jackson to lead again. It's time for the city of Jackson to lead again. If they pay peeler hatchet police officers a certain amount to make them the highest paid, then the city of Jackson must pay our officers higher. And Councilmember Lee told me a minute ago about the fire department issue. That's a non-issue. We got an agreement with the fire department, the city of Jackson, under that agreement. That's a non-issue. The issue we have is that Jackson be the highest-paid law enforcement agency in this region. And we really need to say in this state, let Jackson lead again. Let's become the Jackson where people not afraid. Let's become the Jackson where you can sit on your porch again. Let's pay these officers. We will retain them. We will make this city safe like it need to be. It's not safe because these officers not working. They working their ass off. I mean, excuse. I mean, they, they working pretty hard, but they not getting paid like they should get paid. And that's what this item would do. We putting Jackson back as number one. It's not gonna be North Mississippi, it's not gonna be Capitol Police, it's not gonna be the coast. It's gonna be Jackson, Mississippi. Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Stokes, uh, embody. Just, just to, um, deal with this, I think that we can get a unanimous passage today. If, if you all would indulge me for a second. One, uh, Chief Wade is on the record saying that he is going to propose a raise. I agree with you wholeheartedly that we should leave. If, if, uh, my colleagues will be, this is my suggestion. That, uh, because in order to do this, do this right, we need to make sure we get the numbers from the chief and from the police chief. But I, I want to do something that I think will work and be a win-win. That one, that we amend this, this is my motion, that we amend it from being an order to a resolution, and that it says increase, uh, implementing a salary increase for the Jackson Police Department and Jackson Fire Department. That's in the title. And the third, whereas, I mean, the second and third, whereas, that you add Jackson Fire Department. That we add one, two, three, four, a fifth, whereas. And the fifth, whereas, says, whereas, the city council of Jackson requests the chief of Jackson Police Department and the chief of Jackson Fire Department to provide a budget to the city council to perform the resolved request. And then in the therefore, it is hereby, after Jackson Police Department, add Jackson Fire Department. And in that way, we will have the information and the numbers, and then we could come back and do this order. So if, uh, that, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
I mean, second.
Okay, second. It's been moving properly second on that amendment.
Discussion.
Yes, sir. Councilman Stokes?
Uh, and correct me, and I know legal's gone, but somebody from legal. Don't we already have an agreement, uh, that when police department get a raise, the, did fire department get a raise?
It had been ratified. It had been agreed back then. It doesn't exist.
It wasn't in its expiration on it, was it?
There was some discussion, I believe, Tim, Attorney Tim Howard, and Attorney Monica Allen advised at that time that there were some issues with it being carried on from one administration to the other administration. Am I right on that, Terry Williamson? Somewhere around that ballpark. It's been a while ago. And, and, and that, that agreement between the local union and the administration would have to be revisited. That was the last understanding we got.
Didn't we get the fire more money when we gave the police more money recently?
We did that during budget season because it was the will of this body to do so.
And it became the will of the body because it was an understanding that when the police get more money, the fire department get more money, and there was some passed, wasn't?
I agree, but I think for the sake of understanding and clarity, since we have Jackson Police Department spelled out, if this is something that we're going to do, that we should also spell out Jackson Fire Department, so there be no confusion behind it.
All right, let, let me make sure I understand. Now, if we change this to a resolution.
Yes, sir.
Then it's gonna come back as a order.
We, when we get the information from both the chiefs, then we could take it into finance committee, or it could come back as an order once we get that information. But what we have to do is make sure that we can find the money. Uh, I think that we have, and it, it has to be able to be something that we could do. And I think that these are things that we're willing to work out. And just also say, we start budget season June? June, July, Fidelis? July? Yeah, yeah, so all of this is right on time.
Okay, well, I, I want to get it on the record.
Yes, sir.
That I did not speak to the chief of police because I did not want the chief of police to be in a hot seat that you working with Kenneth Stokes trying to do this and do that. I don't want anybody to be blamed for any of this. This is just the right thing to do. It's time for Jackson to be number one again. It's time for us to lead again. It shouldn't be a peeler hatchet, a Capitol Police who's leading. Jackson must lead by any means, by any means necessary, at any cost. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, uh, obviously, I would suggest that, that all of this is gonna have to be governed by the numbers, and, and we'll see that, but the suggestion that the chief would be in some hot seat, I reject that. In fact, the chief tells me every time he's going to one of your programs, and I say, you should go. Go ahead, just so you know. I, I always encourage him to talk to you.
During, during the, the start of the legislative session, uh, Mr. Stokes, uh, Chief Wade did come see me. He said, Councilman Banks, I just want to let you know that I'm gonna be coming back and asking for a raise for my guys. So he, he has said and expressed, and I think that the way Chief Wade has been, he probably gonna ask for a raise every year. All right.
Well, you know, I would hope, what are we talking about? The police department get a raise every year, not what we're saying, what, what this item is trying to do.
You want them high paid?
It's understood that JPD is gonna be the highest paid, period.
All right.
I don't care, and I should, if we're gonna amend it, I think the amendment should be statewide versus the region. But it, it, that's the only way that we can put the pride where the pride need to be, because they overworked. They answering a whole lot of calls, and they doing a whole lot in, in, and to hear whether you say Capitol Police or whatever police department is gonna get paid more, it's not the right step that this city should allow to happen.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, we, go ahead, Councilman Lee.
Yes, um, and one thing to add to what Councilman Stokes said, and that is the fact that we are losing that, that, uh, experience. Some of our top folks are moving out. I know several now with Capitol Police because of the pay and, and other things. But we do have some folks coming back. Why? Because we have a strong leadership in Mr., uh, and, um, and Chief Wade. And that's a testament to his leadership skills, when folks decide to turn around, stop what they're doing, and come back and serve the city of Jackson. That's what leaders do. They bring people back. Uh, one thing I would like to, to just get a clarification from, uh, Councilman Stokes. Are you saying that you would not support this resolution in a resolution fashion?
You know, um, we're trying to get a win, and, you know, resolution not gonna carry away that's an order. And, you know, we can bring it back. But I think we need to send a message to these police officers that we're on your side. And the resolution might, but they gonna say, well.
Well, well, Councilman Stokes, I think the thing that the resolution, and I hear you, but I think the thing that this resolution does, and, and I think that the administration is willing to cooperate in this fashion, is that it, it requests that the chief of both JPD and JFD provide us what those numbers would be, so that we can look at it. And I don't know if, I don't think there's any objection from, um, the executive side of the government to not provide the information. I think if, if, if you want to add to this amendment and add a timeline.
Now.
Okay, all right, then.
When, that's why I was gonna ask, when will we take a formal vote on the order?
If you want to add a timeline to the information, to receiving the information, and then once we get the information, then we can follow up, and, and then we can put that order with the information in there. So what's, what's, you want to say thirty days?
Well, what I do, Mr. President, um, I will hold this item.
You want to hold the item?
Oh, yeah.
Or you, you want amended to get the resolution so we can get the information?
Well, the only thing about.
Come back with another order all the time.
Only thing about these.
It's on the record as a resolution?
About the resolution, uh, Mr. President, sometimes they die. They never make it back.
I.
They never make it back.
Let me ask this question, because the resolution is going to our chief and our fire chief that are under the direction of the mayor. Mayor, if we get this resolution to you in good faith, will you, will, will, will you allow this to die?
I will, regardless of, I, I don't know what that was about. But regardless of, uh, whether there's a resolution or an order passed, I will ask that the police chief and the fire chief present, uh, information on this uh, for further discussion. At this very moment, I'm asking that. I, I know that, I see leadership in the police department that's here. Uh, I see leadership in the fire department that's here. Generate the information, uh, work alongside, um, the budget division and, and see, you know, to help you to present these, this information. So I've, I've done that at this moment in time.
All right, so, so that the heart of what you intend doesn't, uh, go to waste or go to not, because, Mr. Stokes, you can always bring back an item. We do have a motion and a second. I'm gonna call for the vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
What's the amendment?
I think we should go by the author. What does he want?
Withdraw. I withdraw the order.
All right, we withdraw everything. Just trying to get some.
It's all on the TV camera.
All right. Well, there we go.
We'll, we'll send a, a written request.
Okay, yeah, I'll just try to give opportunity for there to be actual something in the record in a minute saying that we did this. All right, uh, fifty-nine, Councilman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, mass shooting in Jackson, Mississippi is something that we just never dreamed of. I had the chance to go out with a television station to, uh, Mary Jones School. And these are the bullets that was left out there. As you can see, in the neighborhood, they call these street sweepers. And these are small guns. So it was plenty shooters, more than one shooter. I passed them out so councilmembers can see them for themselves. Um, here we had a, a known dope boy to be one of those people who, uh, put this activity on. That's why I said, we must make sure that someone fill out some type of paperwork and that parks be responsible for giving permission for people to gather. They were not on Jones Center Playground as much as they blocked Yake Street where the swimming pool is. They were near the swimming pool. Street blocked, guns and everything else, AKs. The situation that you run into is that here's a gentleman that's convicted of drug sales two times, murder that they broke down to manslaughter one time, which should be three strikes and you're out. Then the word come that we've been doing this for seven years. And it wasn't a birthday party, it was Easter. Are we gonna make these neighborhoods, these older neighborhoods completely unsafe? The chief came out and the command staff in good faith. Even went across the street, what we were saying, we want to reduce the murders in this city by half. He went across the street, met with children, talked to people. But with a business scared, they had to leave. By the time they were getting ready to do another activity that evening, police officer who was on the scene or sergeant said, well, Mr. Stokes, we got another activity, we got to go. I said, well, let's shut it down. We crossed the street, we're older people, we don't mix children and older people. I said, tell them to shut down also. They did not listen to the police department. Consequently, people shot. When the police told them shut down, they should have shut down. But in my ward, in the poor neighborhoods, they're saying they bitch if Capitol Police had told them shut down, they would have. That's why we got to push and let everybody know that Jackson, JPD is the number one police department in this state, not just in this region. Five people shot. That's what you hear in New York, Los Angeles. Shouldn't hear nothing like that in Jackson, Mississippi. You're not talking about a church put this on. You're not talking about any kind of organization besides dope boys. You cannot allow dope boys to run these inner-city neighborhoods where they make young people feel that it's nothing bad in being a dope boy. That's why they dropping out of school. They dropping out of school because they teaching them that thug life, that street life is the best life. Be a hustler. Don't listen to a teacher. That's why they going to school, high school to Brown, smoking dope in school. Teacher can't tell them nothing. And then you got to wonder why teachers are leaving the school and the classroom. We must make parks safe. It's a shame people come in town, won't go to the park. They taking their junior grant chair to make it, to rank in Madison County. That's a shame. No indictment on the director of Parks and Rec. Everybody know what's going on. He trying to put more police out here. But we got to get these dope boys and all these criminal elements out our parks. They blocked the whole street. Man was something, he said, Kenny, somebody gonna get shot. Walk around with AKs. Little old boy, what was, eight years old, get shot in the chest? We cannot keep giving, we cannot keep giving these dope boys the green light to do what they want to do in Jackson. They are convicted felons. They would not do this in Madison Rankin County, and I'd be doggone, we're gonna do it in my ward. They are convicted felons having parties to tail the community that they in charge to run this community, rerun it. And that's a lie. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Stokes. All right, uh, you have a comment on this before we go to fifty-five?
No, I'm just gonna remind you about fifty-five.
All right, uh, if the clerk will get fifty-five on the floor.
Drew and uh, Mr. Johnson, they're calling your item back up now.
Go ahead.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an insurance services agreement between the city of Jackson, Mississippi and Fisher Brown Bartral Insurance Agency.
Second. All right, go ahead, go ahead.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. So so what I've handed out, uh, we've made the uh, the remaining revisions to the agents agreement, agency agreement with Fisher Brown Bartral and have handed that out to all council members. There were only a couple of changes that were left to be made. The primary one was the term of the agreement, which is in paragraph two, which says that the agreement will be for the insurance plan periods commencing September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three through September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-four, and September twenty-eight, twenty-four through September twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-seven, so long as the client maintains the commercial insurance plans referenced in paragraph one. And I've also taken the order that was before the council, and I have a a couple of amendments that can be made to that uh, in order to ref- reflect the changes that have been made to the agency agreement.
All right, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do it real easy in one shot. You ready? You writing? All right, I move that we attach the new agency agreement and replace, that we replace the the agency agreement just provided by the city attorney's office with the one that is currently attached. And I all, in that, in this motion, I also move that we let the language in the order reflect the language in the agency agreement. All right, it's been moved a proper second uh, on that motion. Clerk, you got it? It covers everything. Attorney, are you satisfied with that?
I am.
All in favor with the amendment? Do you, so he just handed us an agency agreement. Attached to the order that we have is an agency agreement. We are replacing this agreement with the one that's been previously attached. And then we're letting the language in the new agreement in the order, the language in the order reflect that of the agreement that it has been replaced with.
What in the con- Mr. Bank?
Go ahead.
So in the contractual agreement uh, previously given to us, it is, I'm sorry, in the contractual agreement previously given to us, it outlines the scope of services, period of performance, non-waiver breaches, subcontracting. Will all that still be included in this new?
So what?
Cuz it is not stated in this.
No, no, the answer is no. The the, so you you should take it as if the agreement that, so the agreement that was before you that was in the council agenda is the agreement that had been revised by the city at some point in the past, but had never been approved by Trustmark. And so uh, what we've returned to is the original contract as approved by Trustmark, which is what I've presented to you here. The only change to that being the term of the agreement.
And you agree to?
Yes.
Legal sufficiency of that?
Yes.
All right, we had that motion second on.
Question?
Yes, sir.
If the relationship between Trustmark and Fisher Brown Bartral changed, would that affect this contract at all?
I don't believe it would. In other words, the contract is with Fisher Brown Bartral Insurance Agency, Eek. Uh, so for, in theory, I think to address your question, uh, if Fisher Brown Bartral were to spin out from under Trustmark or to be uh, purchased by some other institution, this contract should continue as it is.
Well, I don't know about others, but I trust Trustmark. I don't know enough about uh, Fisher Brown Bartral independently.
I think we should know that that we've been in contract with them now for some time. Uh, and and I don't know of any threats to the relationship between Fisher Brown Bartral and and Trustmark. You've been with them for some time now, right? Eighteen years?
Yeah.
So it's been an eighteen-year relationship?
Yeah. I I concur. I agree with what the mayor said. Let me just say, I I think that I'm safe to say this. Uh, upon hearing those rumors, I did talk to an executive at Trustmark. And it was entertained as just a rumor. Um, but what is, and what it wanted wanted to make sure was understood is that, first of all, insurance companies, banks are selling insurance companies to the correct price all the time. What they cannot speak to, if somebody came in and offered Trustmark bank five billion dollars, they don't know what they'll do, you know? But at the end of the day, as of right now, that is, you know, that was, it was told to me that it was a rumor and that the relationship is strong. That was what was explained to me. All right, so we have the item on the floor as amended. All in favor? Oppose? All right, item carries four-three. Now we have the item on the floor as amended. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? Item carries four-three. Thank you, colleagues. Let's go back to Mr. Stokes, number sixty, Industrial Drive.
Mr. President, um, there's major concerns about crime on the industrial drive, but we're really, really concerned about this plant in there. The fire that we experienced a couple of weeks ago. We're concerned about why are they still allowed to exist in a populated area of this city? They should be put in an area where it's not so populated, in the rural areas, somewhere like that. We believe that we should not wait or have to wait for someone to be killed or blown up before we start stressing that they need to move outside the city limits unless we can find them an unpopulated area within the city limits. But they should not be near residents. You got children, you got neighborhoods, you got everything that is a danger because of this plant. We believe that this plant should be moved outside the populated area of Jackson. We believe that we have fought this situation over and over again. Businesses are concerned. We have an industrial park with over ninety-plus percent occupancy. But they're gonna be concerned about the danger also that's presented. Got an airport, an airport just yards away. We cannot allow this plant to be a detriment to this city and the community that it resides in. You have Red Road, one of the busiest, I think, tracks between Dallas, Texas and Atlanta, Georgia. Less than a mile, half a mile from this location of this plant. You got one of the busiest intersections in this city, which were Wilson Corridor, Two Twenty and the State Two Twenty. Why do we allow this kind of threat to the citizens of Jackson, Mississippi? Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Uh, colleagues, next we have my discussion item, which was engagement letter. We did bring this up some um, yesterday in work session, but uh, did not want to completely um, dive into a decision until we have more of a representation of council members here. I did just kind of um, get some feedback from Councilman Griselle on this. But uh, colleagues, this engagement letter deals with um, uh, do we uh, want to do an engagement letter with the current auditor again to um, to perform our audit? Uh, are 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 is it the will of this body to look elsewhere? And um, uh, and and so that that is, that is the question before us because if we're going to do it, because time is of the essence, we would need to get this engagement letter done, executed. I would have to, we would have to execute this engagement letter as soon as possible because we are due for the twenty-twenty-three audit like now. And so we need to get that done as soon as possible. Councilwoman Lindsay?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, my question is on timing. Um, if if we do want to do a new RFP and search for a different company, that would need to be done, I mean, we're we're months behind on that. Um, if if we wanted to look at it for next year, we would need to go in ahead and get that RFP out for the next audit cycle soon, like by June one. But um, right now, it seems like we're kinda under the gun because we, that this audit should have started in March, right?
Yeah, no, no, I I I agree. Uh, so so Councilwoman Lizzie, your your recommendation is we go and execute an engagement letter and then uh, we would want to do, uh, I don't know if it'd be a RFP or RFQ when it comes to the way it's supposed to come. Whichever one, but we gonna do it for twenty-four.
And and I do not oppose that, Mr. President.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
I know you know this, but for the benefit of of residents that may be watching, so that RFP would surface from the council. Uh, this is, this is within the the specific purview of the council uh, in hiring and and sending out requests for proposals uh, for potential auditors, uh, so.
Uh, uh, that, yes, Ms. Mr. President, the mayor is correct about that, but we would have to have the assistance and the expertise from the finance department.
Since since they work directly with the auditor, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, they, I I certain Fidelis wanted to say something, but I'm sure that they'll be more than willing to support that.
Yes, I just wanted to uh, share this. Uh, in terms of engagement for auditing services, uh, this is exempt from going through an RFP. Uh, this is one that you could engage directly uh, with.
So we don't have to do RFP, we could just engage whatever firm, okay? Thank you for uh, for, all right, Councilwoman Lindsay?
I would, I would like to suggest that we at least do some sort of RFQ or something to search to see who else out there.
You, there's a, Drew Martin, City Attorney, you can go in a few different routes, and it is always a good idea to get uh, different qualifications and different prices and so forth, but you don't have to go through a formal RFP process to do that, yeah.
Okay, so we we could just start requesting quotes?
Exactly.
All right, uh, colleagues, what 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 is, I've heard from Councilwoman Lizzie, what is everybody else wish on this? To, is 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 the wish to go and see who's out there before we do an engagement letter? Okay, so we, so you're saying let's go ahead and do the engagement letter and then start the search for twenty-four?
I think that we should follow the legal department suggestion and have legal more involved.
Of course.
And making sure that uh, everybody that we deal with is truly qualified so that we can have backup or something else come up. But uh, I think that's the most important thing, make sure it's a fair process.
Okay, um, anybody else? Are we good? So what we'll do is, uh, Drew, I get with you on the engagement letter.
Okay.
That we currently have and look at that. And then uh, what I would do is uh, appoint colleagues, at least a three-member committee to look at some of the quotes of the other um, auditing firms, uh, and if there are any recommendations, please get them over to us uh, while while we're doing this, all right? Anything else on that? All right, the next discussion is debt service and ARPA spending update. Uh, Fidelis, you gonna provide us something on that? Is that what this was? I got it, I got that, but the ARPA spending? So colleagues, this this spreadsheet that we receive right here is the debt service. Okay, with the uh, series, bonds and everything. Uh, the only thing we're waiting on is the ARPA.
So with the ARPA funds, I I I know we we gave the available balance. Are you needing more details?
Yeah, yeah, we want to see what it, what what is, you know, basically just refresh our memory.
Okay, sure.
Because it's gonna be asked, but so just refresh our memory about what was spent and what's left, and if there are, if you all have anything down the pipeline where you might plan on spending that money.
Sure, I I have that because we had to file a report with uh, the US Treasury, so um, I I have that document ready.
Okay, well, that's, you could just get that to us, we got this, thank you so much. The next discussion is uh, Councilwoman Lee, stray dogs and animal control and garbage ru- rates.
Pam, Mayor, I'm starting to get a lot of uh, calls and I see on social media constituents talking about stray dogs and violent dogs attacking them. I had some violent dogs attacking some of our employees in our industrial park area and just wanting to know, I've been, you know, I usually send them to Christian, to Mr. Vance. Um, so I'm just wanting to know that, and I'm also replying to some of the rumor on social media saying that JPD doesn't have an animal control unit. Is there someone or somebodies that we can identify that responds to stray dog calls?
Let me, let me, I want you to to elaborate, but we do have an animal control unit. Our animal control facility is down right now because it was considered to not, it was substandard for for housing those animals.
But if they call JPD, there is a unit that can respond.
Yes, and they they work, they work alongside other uh, animal control agencies within the area uh, in order to coordinate uh, how they they respond to that. But I'll let uh, Jimmerson elaborate on that.
And Jimmerson, can you also please give a number that people can call if they experience stray or violent dogs?
Captain George Jimmerson, Jackson Police Department. Um, once again, yes, we do have animal control unit. Um, our facility is currently uh, is not operational, but we are working on it. But we're also working with our sister companies that when we go out and uh, address these stray dogs and violent dog issues, um, we take them by case-by-case basis. If a dog bite or a aggressive dog, we go out and we assess the situation. And if we do um, find that there's some evidence of it taking place, we will get the dogs. But we are um, partnering with um, the American Rescue League to um, get our uh, animals that we bring temporarily, you know, until we get ours um, back up. But we are addressing the situation on a case-by-case basis.
All right, you you got follow? All right, Councilman Harley?
Yes, uh, Mr. Jimmerson, so uh, just correct me if I'm wrong. If someone calls about a dog wandering through the neighborhood, is there anything you do in that case, or does it, does that dog have to be aggressive?
We we do go out and we assess the situation. You know, right now, we don't, we are at the mercy of um, some of our um, neighboring facilities because, once again, they're overwhelmed also because of the large volume of dogs and animals we have here in the city. But we are, uh, we do go out and assess it, and if we see that there's some aggression there, um, we do remove that dog. We 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 find a place to put it.
And um, just to follow up on that, um, wh- what's next? I mean, are we looking at restoring the facility, adding additional people? Uh, what's what's our next step?
Repairs, the repairs are are, um, you have any update on that?
Louis.
Louis Wright, CAO, we're in the process of making some necessary repairs at the shelter in terms of the chief acts that we just really make it so the cages where we hold the dogs can be locked. And it's my understanding that facilities has done that and we can lock dogs up or animals up. The next request that he had was in terms of ventilation and we're working on the ventilation in the facility right now. He just wanted a place where he could hold the animals, get them out the neighborhood and just hold them. There are some major structural things that we need to do there, but he does not want that done right now. He just wants a place where he can hold them, so that's what we're working on.
We need to hold a facility for?
Sir, when you say, when you say he?
The chief.
Oh, Chief Wade, okay, and what about personnel?
I'll let chief address.
They've always, it's never been a personnel issue, it was a facility issue. Now, I will say the long-term vision, I believe we'll be in a better place if we could have, you know, experts in dealing with animals, running the actual facility. That would be a better structure, in my opinion. But until we have an agreement or are able to put that in place, then it will remain with the personnel that we have now. We've had animal, you know, animal organizations or animal rights organizations that have come forward and been a part of these conversations. They've even talked about possible funding, but when we got to the dollars and cents, they really did not have sufficient funding to address this issue. And that's why we've been working to make this happen in-house. They didn't, they, I thought they had more money, but they didn't.
So do we have a good budget for, to proceed? With animal control, with picking up strays and fixing the facility and are we good there?
Yeah, I think the facility fix is going to still be, the complete facility fix is a longer-term thing. But in terms of getting it up to a condition or standard that we can house at least a few animals, then that is what the chief's assessment is, is what he needed.
Okay, and that final question, that telephone number, sir?
Okay. After hours, you can call 601-960-1234. That's our general line. And they will forward an email to me. And I will also dispatch our animal control. Also, you can call 960-1771.
That's during daytime?
Yes.
All right, we sure that information is correct? Are we sure that information is correct?
Yes, and that rolls over to our call-out phone. So, and be advised for council, you know, this is my cell number. If you have something that you need to direct, contact me direct, 769-209-7340.
Captain Jimmerson, follow-up. Once the animals are removed and maybe placed in the animal shelter, how long do they stay there and then what happens to them? That's when you call the Animal Rescue League and then they take over from there?
Depends on the situation, sometimes they're euthanized.
Correct, there it is. These animals have to be held for a period of time before?
And there goes the misunderstanding of what the City of Jackson is in the business of. We do not have an animal shelter.
Correct.
We have an animal control unit, two totally different things. A shelter houses and, you know, animals, that's not our intent. We're trying to control vicious dogs, the overpopulation of animals. You know, those are the things that we are in the business of doing and that's what we respond to. We do not have a shelter, we have a control unit.
And your control unit, are there any problems with the refrigeration freezer systems? Because I know that's one of the things, after you euthanize them, they freeze them. And get for later disposal. Okay, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, the freezer works very well. We had disposal, yeah, you know, we're not freezing lives, animals.
This is not little fluffy, okay? Not fluffy, okay?
Let me just leave that.
Okay.
All right, Councilwoman Lee, you have garbage rates?
I wanted to go back, that's what I was trying to jump in. To Councilman Stokes' point about industrial drive and Jackson Energy, I've been notified by the Jackson Department that they have been restricted from opening back up until they have a full fire suppression system. So I just want to make that clear. And that's what, Elliot, Chief Holmes, share it with me.
All right, Garbage Rates League?
I'm not sure why this is all on the same item, but this is about garbage rates. Mayor, I wanted to know, now that we've ratified the contract with Richard's disposal and we are out of the emergency contract from 808 going to now 841, do we know what the increase will be to the consumer?
Yes, that increase will be dependent upon collection rates. If we're able to sustain and the sanitation side of where Jackson Water is, they're collecting at about 52%. If it maintains at that rate, then we will have to increase. If we can improve beyond the 52%, then it doesn't require a increase. But that determination will be made soon and if there is a necessary increase, it has been estimated it'll go from $37 to about $42.
Okay, but right now, there is no increase?
There is no increase yet because it wouldn't be necessary if we can improve the collections. But if we can't rely on that, then unfortunately, that may have to be something we consider.
About $5 a month increase if we do, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Lindsey?
Yeah, just for clarity, what's the magic percentage that we would need to reach, 52 to what?
So you've gone beyond my knowledge, I'll have to ask Fidelis to kick in on this one.
And while we're talking about, you know, I know I've raised this before several years ago, before all this stuff even had about, or came about, about separating the sanitation out. If we were to do that, has anybody looked at the feasibility if we were to do sanitation on our own? I mean, if they, if we point the finger, I mean, if we're saying that they're collecting at 52% and can we prop up something and collect it 100%? Well?
We were making changes and improvements.
That's, that is, yeah, because I don't think our money invested went, who, you, you yielded nerve?
No, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted, in response to your question, one of the considerations you have to think about when you talk about separating it out is how do you ensure that people who don't pay don't get their trash picked up?
Well, you know, the thing is, I assume that even if they water it shut off, their trash get picked up anyway. But I think what happens is we have an opportunity to really show the difference in the lack of collections and stuff that may be happening on the water suicide. And I'm willing to bet that it would probably be a stronger collection on the garbage side because there's still things on the water suicide.
Yeah, I think we could get maybe the benefit of segregating those numbers to better understand what is being collected. But the principal issue goes back to what Dr. Omari said. And that's why it's usually connected is because what we don't have, let's say they don't, they choose. We segregate it, they choose we're not going to pay our sanitation costs. Then we don't have, nor does any of the companies that execute residential pickup have the capacity to have a list as they ride down the street of which houses not to pick up at.
But if, I mean, you could outsource this and they get a percentage off of our collections to somebody that can really do it, right? Like Nashville?
Outsource the collections of bills? I mean, but you would still?
And then they got to separate it up all over and then the company makes a percentage off of the collections.
No, no.
No, but it's still a conversation, I mean, because if Jackson Water doesn't do their part, then the rates going to go up. And so how do we ensure that people pay at least?
Now, what we can do, we can steal, I mean, that's still a present.
Based on what?
Collections, collections is still a present ability that we have through an outsourced company. But just as with those that owe bills today, it's a time-consuming process. And whether we would be, you know, kind of in the arrears trying to catch up using that process as the principal way that we hold people accountable for trash pickup, I think it may balloon to a bigger issue, but let me say this.
I just asked for a feasibility.
No, no, no.
To look at feasibility.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go. I think that there's nothing wrong with a question and we can find answers to the question.
Mr. President? Okay.
Yeah, just another thought, it may be legal department. In terms of exploring, what other municipalities have done is they've actually tied sanitation to either property taxes or car tags, right? But again, I know legal would need to do the research to determine. Back to your question in terms of the sweet spot, ideally, if we are above 80%. 80%, 77, 80%.
Is that realistic?
That's where we were, that's where we were. We never went below, the lowest we were at, at the worst was 72%. So this is 20% below that. So we never went, even though that's not ideal, right? We never went below that and so it's certainly realistic because we were doing it.
We never went below 72%?
Never.
72% of what?
Collections.
So you're talking about 72% of bill customers, but we weren't billing 100%. So the realistic percentage is what is the amount of customers?
Yeah, the collections percentage is based on what's collected from bill, right? So when you bill and what you collect.
You're still butt out of luck.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if you can't, if you billing, like for example, Walmart and Barnes weren't getting the bill, that's money, right? So just talking realistically here and I'm looking at, all right, go ahead, what you go, sir?
Yeah, and I was just going to say, I mean, once we increase the rate to $37, our billing got up to about 1.5, 1.4, 1.5. And that's the rate that Jackson Water is still billing at is around that number, but the collections percentage is lower, right? They're collecting some months 700,000, 800,000, which is not even sufficient to cover the emergency garbage contract fee, right? And so we, I mean, the billing is there, 1.5, 1.4.
But it's not enough to cover?
That would be enough, but, but the.
Your chance, go back and look at the collections in 13, 14, 15, 16, 17. Just start looking at the collections at 18. Okay? And then let's just have a conversation.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Could we get Richards to remove the garbage, pick up the garbage at Jones Center on Decatur Street on the backside of Marlowe to King? Backside of Marlowe to King, I guess that's Decatur Street, right between Jones Center and the cemetery. There's trash all on the ground, the dumpster is full. Right down at, I think it's Decatur Street, backside of Jones Center. It's the property, the garbage is on Jones Center.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I also got several calls about the cemetery off of Capitol Street about a lot of dumping in the cemetery in the back by the woods.
Okay. Yes, I've been out to that location. There's a road that runs parallel with the cemetery and at the end of that road is pretty much impassable. But it's not as much dumping there as it is some of the other roads. And I already took pictures and sent it in. But there is some, a lot of tires there. And you can see, you know, some of the residents in that area complained that, you know, they have relatives there and right on the other side of the fence, saw it is garbage and trash. And they, you know, they don't, really don't like that, they want it cleaned up. But that's just one of several areas. There's at least one road in that area east of that, over, can't think of the name of the road now, but maybe, can't think of the name of the road, but that's totally impassable. And again, I like to iterate that, reiterate that a lot of stuff that we should have, because we were focused on the garbage, 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 I believe a lot of other, a lot of our citizens didn't really know what to do with the other items that should have been picked up, that you can put on the curb, like couches, mattresses. Those were on the increase at all our open dump sites because we got so tunnel vision on garbage. But I keep reminding my constituents that on the second garbage collection day, you can put out two bulky items. You can put out a mattress and a dresser, taking the drawers out of the dresser for weight. You can put out a sofa, you can put out a commode if you did it yourself, okay? You know, two bulky items from a household, you can put those out. And I see that the city did put out a flyer. It didn't go into detail as to what those bulky items were, but they did say you can put out the bulky items. But I think the more we can get the word out, the more we can help decrease these open dumps from popping up along with other initiatives like Mr. Wade. But over in that area, that's what you see. You see mattresses, couches, dressers, commodes and tires. But in solid waste also have restored the Wednesday pickup of waste tires. Individuals can call that number 1172, 1173, that's 960-1173 on by Tuesday and they will pick up, they will pick up your waste tires on Wednesday. But slowly, we need to get the city cleaned up, thank you.
Go ahead and go to your next item, Park.
Okay, my next item, and I appreciate you sticking around, Mr. Muhammad. This is about a problem that we are having in our communities, in our parks. And we need to get on it early or as soon as possible. He can give you the details, but this pine beetle infestation is happening all around the state. And please, can you just for a moment describe the problem?
Pine beetle?
Pine beetle.
Abraham Muhammad Parks and Rec. Yes, sir, the state is experiencing a pine beetle infestation. Last year alone, it destroyed over 12 million pine trees throughout the state, which came to an economic impact of about $96 million. This year, we're, is looking at that to be on the increase of the same. The administration, as well as my department, we are aware of the situation and we are exploring some methods to be able to mitigate the situation.
One of those things that we are seeking to do is declare an emergency, like other cities have done. So once the state recognizes that there are emergencies declared in multiple cities and the counties join in, then quite possibly the state can allocate funds to mitigate the challenge at that point in time.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Muhammad, can you describe the impact to our parks with this?
Yes, sir, where there are pine trees and where there's excess drought and warm weather, it breathes for the pine beetles to come and once they attack the pine trees, then that causes them to die and then it gives way to where we have to pick up the pine trees before they fall and cause any type of damages and things of that nature.
Do we have a large percentage of pine trees in our parks?
I'm sorry, sir.
Do we have a large percentage of pine trees in our parks?
In some of our parks, yes, sir, we do.
Councilwoman Lindsey?
Yeah, thank you. I know that Jamie Boyle Park on Lakeland has been hit especially hard. And I had a constituent call me this week and say that we've got a couple of pine trees there that if they fall and they look like they're close to falling, we'll hit the fire station. So we might need to look at that particular situation because it's full of pine trees.
I've already reached out to a contractor who's going to be going out there next week to take care of it. I spoke with that constituent and we're on top of handling that already. I spoke with that constituent and, uh, we're on top of handling that already.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you, um, Delaney, other meeting to, to return to us. Uh, just, let's keep us abreast because, you know, we have pine trees in all our, in all our wards, so...
We're in contact with the, uh, the State Forestry Department who's better advising, and I will continue to pass that, uh, information on to the administration as we continue to mitigate how we're gonna handle it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hartley, going to go to you next.
Okay, my next item is street signs, street markers, and traffic signs. Mr. Lee, I just wanted to basically just kind of find the status. I know, uh, months ago, I asked you about specialty street markers. It's a lot of our intersections where folks are confused, uh, as to where the turning lanes are. They haven't been marked. And I think the last time we spoke, uh, it was too cold and too wet, and understandably so. Uh, just kind of wanted to know where we're at now.
I'll have to defer to James Caldwell on that going forward.
To who?
James Caldwell.
Oh, God.
Let me ask you this question. Uh, the signs for Bobby Rush, they're ready, right, from this besides?
They're ready, yes.
They are? So all I need to do, who I need to get that date to from Bobby?
Give it to, give it to, uh, Louis Wright, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, he, he, he requested, since it's around the corner. I thought that he would do it up from Hemingway where he stays, but he requested Walgreens. So I don't know, to do a little event he was gonna have. He wanted enough, at least thirty days, to let the Grammy people know.
Okay, okay.
One final question, Mr. Lee. Um, do you know how our budget is doing for us, the street signs and markers?
I'll have to defer to James and Louis on that going forward.
Okay, well, all right.
If I can ask, I just want to take this moment, um, at the end of the meeting, uh, to commend Robert Lee on his years of service, uh, express our gratitude as a city, uh, for offering his genius. Uh, when I met Robert Lee, I, I fielded complaints with people who just did not like that he was the technocrat that he is, but you come to find out that that is very valuable in a city. Someone who takes the time to understand when things are out of order or, or not in compliance. And so I just want to take this moment and, and thank you, Robert Lee, for your service. Thank you. If we can give him a round of applause. I hate to say this, but Saturday, I was up here at the office working on eight more agenda items for the meeting I won't be at on the twenty-third. We opened bids on two signal projects. These are projects that have been in the works. We're about to advertise for repaving on Woodrow Wilsons from MLK to Mill Street Bridge. Um, trying to get that finalized. I may be leaving, but we still got work to do. Uh, we'll be rooting for Jackson from afar and hope that, uh, better days lie ahead. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Appreciate you.
We can give you honorary offer so we can bug you anytime we want to.
I'll pass out my cellphone.
What other thing, any next steps for you?
I got, I got a new job starting very soon, so I gotta move.
Best wishes to you.
Councilman, Councilman Foot, outsource the public works management?
Yes, sir, this really ties in with Robert Lee walking away is we losing a whole lot of institutional knowledge there. And, and we've lost a lot of institute knowledge, a lot of institutional knowledge over the past couple of years. And the, uh, we need some, uh, the, um, Louis Wright is a great guy, but he's gonna have a lot on his plate right now as an interim public works director. And, uh, he needs some engineer support. And one way to try to accomplish that would be, since, if, if, if we don't find somebody that's ready, you know, come sign up with the city of Jackson, would be to, uh, get some outsourced help from one of the local engineering firms. We're really fortunate that there's a lot of engineering firms in the area that have spent a lot of time working on Jackson product, on projects, from roads and bridges to water sewer and everything else. And so they have institutional knowledge at those firms. And, and we might be able to work in an agreement where they could be, um, come in and, and serve as a, um, you know, um, to provide, uh, guidance and, and, um, counsel for, um, our public works department in lieu of not having a regular engineer onboard.
Yeah, just, uh, as you are probably aware, we've been in these conversations with the engineering firms for some time now. Um, one, uh, I won't say any names for any of them, uh, for sake of, of interfering with what potentially fits. Now, we, we have to consider what potentially fits because they have projects that they don't want there to be a conflict between the projects that they're in. Uh, one of our engineering firms said that it does not work for them, um, that they, they are not in a position to augment, uh, our staffing right now. Uh, and we're still talking to another. Uh, we want to make sure that it allows for not only continuity of, of the work that we're supposed to do, but it doesn't create any, um, undue bias, uh, for the work that goes forward. And, and want to make sure that that is, all of that is controlled. And so we will continue those conversations, uh, as well as continue the interviews of, of individuals as well.
All right, lunchtime is over.
If I, 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 I am assuming, if I, if I may, uh, that we, we've already done the litigation part, right?
Yeah, that was just, I was just gonna make sure we're good. Okay, go. We just got one more item before you do your announcements. Kurt, if you were sixty-eight and this, we acknowledge that.
Monthly report of privileged taxes as required according to section twenty-seven dash seventeen dash five oh one of the Mississippi Code annotated of nineteen seventy-two.
All right, councilmembers, if you just acknowledged by saying, uh, uh...
No, no more eyes? Everybody, everybody got it.
It's, it's a majority, that mean it been received. Um, before you do yours, are there any other closings? I know we had some in the beginning, but there, are there any closings? You do. Vice President Lee?
Uh, I just want to thank everybody who came out. We had two community cleanups this past Saturday. I wanted to thank Jackson State University, Tugalo, uh, College for their students, uh, some of the members of Divine Nine, also AmeriCorps, uh, some of the cohort from forty under forty, and also Operation Good. And just let you know, we do have another community cleanup happening this Saturday in our industrial park area with Keep Jackson Beautiful. Through this grant that we wrote, we were able to also get a blue light camera for that area. Uh, so we've been talking with JPD about that. But please go to Keep Jackson Beautiful to register to help with the cleanup.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to. Close the meeting in honor of Dr. Woody Herring. Mr. Linney, I think nineteen seventy-four, Jackson State graduate. Also, Mr. Willie C. Johnson, Mr. Deodis Walker. And I want to thank Dr. Elaine Hayes Anthony for the invitation to speak at her activity on last night. It was, and thank Cassandra Fox Wilson, who, uh, helped sponsor the activity. Cassandra's recognized throughout the world, has been a great singer. And I think, uh, a lot of people came to support Dr. Anthony. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Mayor?
I, I'll start by joining in, um, with Councilman Stokes on the recognition of Dr. Elaine Hayes Anthony. Um, I, I unfortunately was unable to make that event yesterday. I did receive an invitation, but I'll say publicly what I've said to her. Uh, truly respect her acumen and ability and service to Jackson State, more importantly, uh, because she served in so many roles, her service to the city of Jackson. Um, not that we expect her to be going anywhere, uh, but, but we appreciate her. Um, and so I want to say that publicly. A few announcements, uh, roll-off dumpster day, uh, I know everybody's interested in that, is April thirteenth from eight AM to three PM. Once again, Saturday, April thirteenth, uh, from eight AM to, uh, three PM, so that's this Saturday, at the Metro Mall, the Dillard's parking lot. Please contact Solid Waste Division at six oh one nine six zero eleven ninety-three for more information. Uh, I've announced this a few times, but say this again. Uh, we started a segment called Ask Antar where we're able to go through, uh, full explanation or, or address questions that residents have. And we're asking that people, uh, continue to send them in on the website, uh, and go to the Ask Antar tab. But this Thursday, April eleventh, uh, at the Smith Robertson Museum, we'll have a special college edition, uh, where we're asking college students, uh, to join us. Um, once again, this will be Thursday, April eleventh. Uh, I do not have a time on my notes here. What is the time? Three, three PM, uh, at three PM. So we're asking that they join us. You can contact constituent services, Mr. Chris Gray, uh, for more information, six oh one nine six zero, uh, one 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 one. Uh, we're also hosting a, uh, town hall meeting, uh, this Tu, or Tuesday, April sixteenth, I'm sorry, at six PM at Redeemer Church, uh, located at six forty East Northside Drive. Uh, this assembly will allow citizens the opportunity to engage with not only myself, um, but also city department heads or representatives on issues that they have dealing with quality of life. Once again, you can call our constituent services manager, Chris Gray, at six oh one nine six zero one 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 one. Thank you.
All right, uh, any other announcements, anything else coming for this body? Meeting adjourned.